Tampa City Council now coming to order. Good morning, council members and citizens of Tampa. The regular city council meeting for July 29, 2021 will now start. Im invocation, Mr. Carlson.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. We should have online Reverend Dr. Patricia Hauser. Do we have her online? Great, thank you, welcome. She is the pastor and founder of Potter's House Deliverance Tabernacle in Tampa. She's got a very long resume. I'll read a little bit of it. Her areas of service and leadership activities have included participation on ministerial staff, assistant facilitator for women-only ministry, Bible discovery hour, visitation and caring ministry, mission and outreach ministry, and one of Tampa's best gospel radio personnel. Professionally through pastor, sorry professionally, though Pastor Hauser, passion for hurting and hopeless, she is, has a passion for helping the hurting and hopeless. She is president of the nonprofit organization called Potter's House Community Development, Inc. The purpose of this organization is to provide outreach, assistance, counseling, comfort to families in arts and sciences, humanities, health sciences, especially in the areas of HIV/AIDS. She has a doctorate of ministry, a master of divinity, two associate of science degrees, and two bachelor's degrees, so very well qualified. And if everyone please stand, Reverend Dr. Hauser will say the prayer and then we'll do the pledge allegiance.
Good morning and thank you for asking me to do the prayer this morning. I will pray in my faith on this morning. According to Psalms 121:1, "I will lift my eyes to the hills from whence cometh my help." All of my help comes from the Lord. Heavenly Father, we thank you, first of all, for you being the ruler, creator of all mankind. You rule over every nation in the earth, every country, every state, every city, every municipality, every municipality. And God, you are ultimately under control and you have everything in control. So God, we recognize that you have given us this concept of government in order to protect us and to look after the common good of all people. We thank you that in the U.S. that there is a system called the city council. Lord, I pray for each and every one of them. I pray for their families. I pray, God, they are covered and I pray for protection. I pray that you continue to provide for them. And God, I pray that they will seek to represent you and seek to represent the will of the people in this city, oh God, for the common good. Even when they don't agree, God, that they will come in agreement to disagree. Lord, I pray that all things are done right. I pray that all things that are done for the betterment of all people. God, we won't forget those who are less fortunate than we are. We pray, Lord, for those children that need so much support mentally, physically, and socially. We pray for the gun violence in our communities and around this nation. We pray, God, for domestic violence. Lord, we ask that you would take control. And I pray, God, for those that in authority, first of all and foremost, would seek you and, Lord, seek the answers that you would have them to render. God, we pray now for not just this body, but, God, I pray for other officials, even our president, our vice president. We pray for this mayor in this city. We pray for the police chief and all that they have, decisions that they have to make and everything that's facing them. We ask now, God, that if you would hear this prayer and answer it, we pray it in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic that stands one nation under God, indivisible, living, and just as one. Thank you, Pastor. All right, roll call.
Carlson.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Dingfelder.
Citro.
Here.
Viera.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
And Goode.
Here. Ma'am clerk, just for the record, Mr. Dingfelder did notify he'll be late. He's attending that special meeting this morning. Ms. Shelby.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning, sir.
Thank you. Members of the City Council, members of the City Council Attorney, today's meeting is being conducted in the live and virtual forum of City Council.
The present in council chambers. This is during the continuing federal state of emergency for COVID-19 and in light of continuing COVID-19 government-issued health standards and guidance in effect, members of the public shall continue to have this ability to participate virtually through CMT or community, excuse me, communications media technology, what people refer to as virtually or a hybrid meeting. And that is also pursuant to council's direction. This meeting is being seen by the public on Spectrum Channel 640, Frontier Channel 15, and on the Internet at Tampa.gov/livestream. Now, the instructions to participate are in the notice of this meeting and also contained within the agenda. And again, the use of CMT, it being continued, council at this time, until the rules are made permanent, I'm going to ask that city council make a motion to waive the rules for today's session to make it consistent with the instructions regarding the CMT for the public and whatever else is necessary to conduct it in this hybrid fashion.
This is both by Mr. Maniscalco, sub by Mr. Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any polls?
Yes, sir.
Motion carried. All right, approval of the agenda, Ms. Shelby?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have some items on the addendum. You have memorandum.
Ms. Shelby, let me back up just a little bit.
Sure.
Item number two with the Buffalo Soldiers been notified, they won't be able to make this one. There's some kind of cross here with communications, but their national president will be here next month for a sit-down with our convention bureau and they'd like to come on the 19th. I looked at the calendar, but it's a CRA day, so possibly we can do that as an evening meeting since their national president will be here. So if I can get that changed to, motion to have that changed to the 19th, 5:00 PM?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Carlson, second by Mr. Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? Motion carried. Also, Ms. Shelby, item number 44, I know we have F.D.O. is here, want to move that up in place of the Buffalo Soldiers after item number one. And if we can get a motion for future that when F.D.O. comes, they're not in staff, they're up top on the first portion of the agenda.
So moved.
Question by Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Carlson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? Motion carried. Ms. Shelby, you can continue, sir.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to specifically in council member Dingfelder's absence, I believe there's a request that item number 27 be pulled and moved to staff reports for discussion. Also, Mr. Chairman, if you wish to go through the staff reports individually and see which items can be received and filed and which require staff to be present, that would be very helpful to the administration.
Ms. Shelby, can we get to item number 45 first, sir? I had a discussion with Chief Bennett in reference to item number 45, reference to Chief Chip, but we had, a motion was made back on the first in reference to the background and polygraph that we thought it wasn't going to be included in today's presentation, which is not, and he asked that we move that. I told him that we looked, I would like to move that to a workshop day in September.
Do you want to move both of those together?
Yeah, it's going to be combined. I have a motion, it's going to be combined.
If you want to take that motion now, sir?
Yes, I can take that now, sir. The Fire Chief's presentation and the presentation on the polygraph of employees and process in the memorandum that was sent on August 1st be combined for September workshop.
Could I?
Ms. Carlson, you recognized?
Yeah, just to add in the other part of the motion, which is for her to give us her plan on alleviating the, I forgot the language, the civil, the putting in place anti-discrimination policies. And as I've said before, there's full confidence that I've heard from fire service representatives that she can do that and has plans. She's not available today and also the memo she sent had four points that were about hiring but didn't address other issues. And I and others in the community have had a lot of calls, many anonymously, to try to give feedback. So I would like to have a conversation with her so we can get a more robust discussion about it. The point is not to put her on the spot, but to just hear what her plans are because the community is excited to hear what her ideas are.
Well, we have the motion on the floor. If you want to make sure that that's included in the same motion, because they want to try to do that because all deals with employee relations and employee issues, you know, with the polygraph, we had several calls about the polygraph and background situation that was pertaining to the Fire Department, so I think.
So what date was the workshop?
It's going to be September workshop, September.
23rd, sir. September 23rd, and just for council's information, there's one commendation and one, two, three, four, five, six other items that need to be addressed that day presently. So just, do you see, you know that that's, after this point, I suspect that would be a very full workshop.
So I would like to make a motion to move or to continue item number 45 to September 23rd workshop, which would include Chief Tripp's update on the, as it says here, the gender and racial equity and also the discussion about polygraphs.
Ms. Shelby, you recognized?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I believe after our agenda review yesterday, refreshing my recollection and based on what the Chief of Staff said, I forwarded to you a copy of the April 26th memo that they had sent requesting that these two items be combined, and I've provided that to you and perhaps you can provide that to the clerk to make that a two-part motion and.
Yes, I'd like to add that document to the motion, please. Thank you.
Madam Deputy, could you get that?
And do you have that memo?
I have the memo. Mr. Carlson, we're making, can I have a second on the memo?
Second, put it on.
Oh.
Add it, roll.
There you go, 45. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any polls? All right, motions carried. Ms. Shelby, we can continue, sir, with the agenda.
That's number 45, sir.
Yes, sir.
That item is now completing off the agenda. How do you wish to proceed? Do you want to go down the staff reports and?
Yes, sir, we'll go to staff reports now. If anybody has anything else, I know Mr. Dingfelder said 27 will be in staff reports now.
Unless you want to save this item until after the ceremonial, maybe he'll be here by then in case there's an issue with anything he wishes.
We'll just go ahead and enroll because at one point he'll be here.
Thank you.
All right, item 41, it's a resolution. 42, do we need Mr. Beard here for 42?
Necessary for anybody to be here for 41? Any questions of council? Okay, I just wanted the information to be clear to the administration.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
42, we said no. 43, Mr. O'Hara.
Is there?
Yep.
I don't know whether Mr. O'Hara wishes to say something with regard to that. I have, I don't recall, but if he does, then I guess he's welcome to do that, but there's no questions of council right now? Okay, thank you. 44 is being moved.
Well, he'll be here, you can keep him standing by because he'll be here because I'm going to need him for 47, Mr. Shelby.
Okay.
And again, we've already moved 45.
45.
Memorandum about number 46, any other questions? Am I need Mr. Beard for 46? Mr. Beard?
No, sir, I'm satisfied with them. I'll make some remarks, if I may, brief, but I don't need a staff member here.
Are you sure, sir?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and I thank Brad and Andrew and others for their work on this memo, as it was a very good memo.
I tell you, Ms. Shelby, let's go ahead and have Mr. Beard talk about that with the bill, think that's necessary so people in the audience at home can know what the bill is about and how we will be able to continue as a city to be able to help with this bill or what are our dos and don'ts.
So your request? You want them here?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll, that's fine, I defer to you, sir.
Yeah, I'm here. Of course, 47, Mr. Beard will be here for that. 48, I think that was Mr. Maniscalco and Miranda, you need Mr. Wilfork here, sir?
I'm fine with it.
Fine, sir. Okay, all right, and we have 49, Ms.
I, that's.
Austin, we need to be here.
That's mine. I don't need anyone here unless if anybody else needs, I mean, I think the memo speaks for itself, we could speak about it, et cetera, but I don't need anyone here.
I think we need to hear that, going to have her come in because the numbers are rising, we need to know where we're at with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, approval of the agenda?
So moved.
I have Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? All right, item number one, Mr. Citro, presentation, commendation, August of the month.
Yes, I thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As always, every police officer is deserved of this award, this commendation, and I wish I could give every police officer every month a commendation. However, we're only limited to one. As I start out every time, if you really want to see what these brave women and men go through, please go to the Tampa Citizens Police Academy. You will have training on what these officers do and how they do it and what they have to go through. Chief Dugan, I would like to be the first to publicly thank you for all the great things you have done and the great changes that you have made to the Tampa Police Department. And I am sorry to see that you're retiring. You have served our city very, very well. Chief, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, today we're here to give a commendation to Officer John M. Baker, Jr., and Chief, if you would please explain and tell the people why he is so deserved of this commendation.
Thank you, and like Councilman Citro said, today it's about John Baker, you know, one of Tampa's finest, one of our brightest, who has an incredible future. Officer John Baker has been serving in Tampa Police Department since 2015 and is currently assigned to District 2 Field Training Squad, where he trains new officers prior to them being assigned to their permanent squads throughout the city. During the month of May, Officer Baker worked closely with the District 2 Violent Crime Squad after a discovery was made that an unidentified male was posting photos and videos himself on social media while in possession of an AR-15 rifle, an AK-47 rifle, several pistols, and large sums of cash. The video clearly showed it was being filmed in the Sulphur Springs area. Due to Officer Baker's encounters with the male, he was able to identify him and assist with the investigation, leading to the arrest of the suspect for felon and possession of a firearm. Another male was identified in the photos possessing a firearm and was ultimately located in a vehicle possessing a Glock 40 caliber pistol directly under his seat. The firearm had been reported stolen. Officer Baker is a former sergeant in the United States Army who served as a tomb guard and later served as a sergeant of the tomb guard for the tomb of the unknown soldier. This level of dedication and training is so rigorous and thrives so greatly on perfection that is the third least awarded badge. The only badge awarded less than that than the tomb of the guard is the United States Military is the Military Horseman and the Astronaut Badge. For over the past four years, Officer Baker has been a member of the Tampa Police Department Honor Guard, which presides over ceremonies throughout the city as well as the funerals for fallen officers, retired officers. Using his background and knowledge from previous appointment as a tomb guard, Officer Baker has become the subject matter expert on the guard and has taken the precision and appearance of the Tampa Police Honor Guard to new heights. The Tampa Police Honor Guard is a volunteer unit dedicated to honoring the memory of fallen officers, just furthering the highlighting and dedication of Officer Baker. As you know, in March of this year, the department suffered its first line-of-duty death in over a decade when Master Police Officer Jesse Madsen heroically lost his life in the line of duty. The line-of-duty police funeral the Honor Guard presided over was nothing less than perfect and an amazing tribute to Master Police Officer Jesse Madsen. The entire Honor Guard is to be commended for their efforts. The detail on behalf of the Honor Guard is a testament to the rare expertise that Officer Baker has brought to that team. In recognition of his outstanding service to the department and the city of Tampa, Officer John Baker has been selected as the Tampa Police Officer of the Month for June of 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I'm going to read this off to you, but of course, we have your lovely family back here, which I'm sure you'll introduce later on.
Yes, sir.
And we've got some great partners that are going to be giving you some wonderful things. Officer Baker, because of your dedication to service, commitment to excellence, and going above and beyond the call of duty, you have been chosen for this mark of distinction as Officer of the Month. Tampa City Council, your peers, supervisors, would like to recognize you for your hard work, dedication to the community, in the streets, for your service to our country, community, and fellow officers, and for your diligence to keep dangerous firearms and criminals off our street. It is the honor of Tampa City Council to present Officer John M. Baker, Jr. with this commendation on July 29, 2021. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you very much.
This is your time.
Uh-oh, now I have to talk?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Citro, is that his family?
That's his family back here. I'm trying to get him to bring his family up so I can introduce.
They're kind of shy like me, I apologize.
It's Greg J., bring his family up.
All right, this is my oldest, John. My youngest, Scarlett, she's kind of little, you can't see her. The one hiding in the back is Lillian, and then my beautiful wife, Taylor, my mother, Donna, and then my father, John, but everybody calls him Matt, so.
And these two people are, they work for whom?
They actually work for the city as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, City Council, any words?
Ms. Viera, you recognized?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Officer, thank you so much for your service. You know, when, I think it was Chief Dugan or I think it was Chief Dugan said this, on your being at the tomb of the unknown soldier at Arlington, what a great honor for you.
Thank you.
And I know that you live up to that. You know, we have so many of our first responders in Tampa, firefighters and police officers who have also served in uniform, and it's not only because of the fact that you run into harm's way and you run into situations that people run away from, it's because there's that sense of duty, which is what kind of a person wants to be a cop? What kind of a person wants to be a firefighter? What kind of a person wants to, in a post-9/11 world, sign up for the military? The kind of person who has a sense of duty to make wrongs right and to be the person that stands up to bullies. That's, to my opinion, that's what you all do. I just wanted to thank you for your service and for all that you do, and especially to your family, to your three wonderful children over there. God bless you guys, you all got to be so proud of your old man, of your father, to your wife, you have to be so very proud of your husband and to your parents, you all have to be so proud of your son. I'm a father myself, and if my son or daughter or any kids I may ever have in the future ever did something like that, I'd be beaming with pride. So I know that you all are right now. So Officer, thank you so much for your service. I mean it 110% and just know that this city 110% has your back and respects what you do, 110%. Thank you, sir, and God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Madam Deputy, Mr. Dingfelder's arrived for the record. Mr. Maniscalco?
Congratulations, sir. Thank you for your service, your sacrifice, thank you to your parents, also serve here in the city. We have to give thanks to the spouses. I know it's not easy, but you know, you have a beautiful family, your wife is there. You know, you put on that uniform and you put your life on the line for us. The chief said it all, your citation as to why we're honoring you this month, you know, you kept the city streets safer for your actions. You do that not just in this case, but you do it every day. So we appreciate you and your service. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Carlson, you recognized?
Yeah, just, everything has been said really, but I just want to thank you so much from council and the community. We so appreciate the sacrifices you make every day and the great work that you do. And thanks so much to your family for supporting you and the whole community is with you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Miranda, anything, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Officer Baker, it's what the other council members have said. I also have a saying that says, yesterday, today, tomorrow, and forever. And when you look at what you've done on the, it's unbelievable, from the military, that was yesterday. Today, you're a police officer. Tomorrow, you'll still be working and doing what you did yesterday, and forever, you're going to do what you did yesterday today. So you have done an outstanding service to not only this community, but to the whole of the United States of America. You have a lovely family and you have earned this respect like no other. You stand out in a forest of trees, and it's an honor to say, God bless you and your family, and thank you for what you've done in the past, what you're doing today, and what you will continue to do in the future. Thank you very much, sir, for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Officer, now comes one of the fun parts. I'd like to recognize Dustin Portillo of Casper Company, who is usually here to give the Officers of the Month tokens from that company. Pete Prevy is from Busch Gardens is not here, however, Darla Portman will be giving you that Busch Gardens token of appreciation.
Tickets for your family to go to Busch Gardens.
Come on in here, Darla.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilmen, President Darla Portman, PBA. We've got Jimmy Owens over here, Vice President. We're going to present to John Baker, who I've had the pleasure to work with, and I always love saying that to you guys up here when I get to work with somebody on the street. Really good officer, knows his zone. Anytime we need to identify somebody, we call up John and he knows everybody. We used to have signs back in the days that I am Tampa, and we'd have a police officer on there. I am Tampa is definitely John Baker. He grew up in the city of Tampa, East Tampa, graduated from Middleton High School, and I know Orlando Goode, Councilman Goode, you talked about hiring people here that are from the city. John's from the city. He lives in the city currently and he knows everybody in his zone. So I'm so proud of you and continue to do a great job. And one of our officers in District 1 made this, and we want to present that to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Kristy Renner. I'm the Community Relations Director for Steps Towing and Heavy Transport, and I just want to say, you know, listening to everything that you've done for this country, this community, I've visited the tomb of the unknown soldier and it's just such a reverent, like the tradition that you bring, it's an amazing thing. So to see you standing here and knowing that you were there, it's incredible.
Thank you.
So on behalf of Todd Step and the Steps Towing family, we just want to say thank you, and we have a little gift card for you and a limo. You going to go in a limo? For 18 people.
Wow.
I know, you can just, nobody's going to be left out. It would be perfect.
One, two.
Yeah, there's people putting their hands up back there, but we just want to say thank you and.
Thank you very much.
For everything that you do.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Officer, tradition with the Buccaneers, after a tremendous performance at a game to award a game ball, and on behalf of the Glaziers of Tampa Bay, your Tampa Bay Buccaneers, world champions, we'd like to present you with this ball inscribed, "Thank you for your dedication and service to our community, June 2021, Officer of the Month."
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Good job. Thank you very much for your service to our city and to our country. Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Mary Lou Bailey, and I'm here on behalf of Zoo Tampa at Lowry Park. I serve on the Board of Directors there, and I want to present an annual membership. But before they do that, on a personal note, your story is very relatable to me. I'm the spouse of an ex-Navy officer. I'm the, my nephew and godson was killed in Iraq. I've been at the Tampa Citizens Police Academy, so I have just a taste of a number of dimensions of your life to understand how special you are and how disciplined you are, and I really, really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you and I thank your family for everything that you've been able to do for us. So back to the zoo. One of my passions is conservation of wildlife, and so we're presenting you with an annual membership to the zoo. It includes your whole family and a guest, and you can also go to seasonal events there like Christmas in the wild and other things. So again, thank you for your service. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, thank you.
Good morning, Council. Lea Van Name with Tampa Theater. Officer, on behalf of Tampa Theater, I want to thank you for your service in our community. I'm honored to give you the gift of a membership to Tampa Theater. It includes free tickets to the movies, a free tour to the theater, and popcorn, and indie films.
I was going to say, they're going to take the candy.
Thank you so much, congratulations.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Howke. I'm a marketing and PR manager for the Columbia Restaurant Group. I want to thank Officer for his work and his service for our community. On behalf of the five generations of the Godsmarred family, the more than 1,300 employees of the Columbia Restaurant Group, we'd like to bestow with you a $100 gift card for you and your family.
Thank you. Thank you.
We are tremendously thankful, she wants a gift card now, you might want to give it to her.
She's going to take everything.
She's going to take the football, yes. Anyway, we thank you for your service, and all you do for our community, and we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Where are you going? You've got the gift card, you can't run away.
Steve Miccolini, I'd really want to recognize Officer Baker for a lot of other things, but let's go through the presentations first regarding the gift certificates from Yummy House, and I already gave that to the young lady here, you still have that?
She just gave it back to me.
And on behalf of the Yummy House owners and staff, we're presenting you with a gift certificate so you can enjoy yourself at lunch or dinner. On behalf of Prestige Portraits, you can go have your pictures taken, and I know she's going to sit right in front, right?
Absolutely.
On behalf of the Tampa Metropolitan YMCA, they're providing you with the gift certificates so you can go and enjoy yourself over there at the Y, and on behalf of the CRG Restaurant Group, we're providing you with the gift certificate so you can enjoy yourself, breakfast, lunch, or dinner. Now we get to the good part. I want to talk a little bit about being an Honor Guard, and if you look at your overhead projector, they perform 24/7, 365, and they're on duty, rain or shine. This is what the Honor Guard patch looks like. This is a photograph of the wintertime service. I can't see that very well, but that's the badge that you get, you earn it, you don't get it, but you earn it. And then this is one of the officers on duty in the wintertime. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about the officer that we're honoring. He served in the Honor Guard, and it was pouring down rain, and this is an article about this officer, "And there was nobody there except an old woman," said Baker. "She was looking at me, and she was crying, and whatever, I would walk past, she would just say, 'Thank you.'" "And I kept thinking of one of them, could be her husband, and she never saw him come home from World War II, and that's when it really sunk in, and it added, 'This is why I'm here.'" Reflecting on the experience, "It's a small group of soldiers entrusted to guard the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, and I owe them perfection," said Baker. "They only gave up their lives, they not only gave up their lives for this country, but they gave up their identities as well, and their stories are an open-ended book that may never be closed." Reflecting on his first experience, Baker said he never thought he would see the day when he'd become a Tomb Sentinel. "When I was five years old, I remembered looking at the tomb guard, walking with a rifle, standing at six foot four, and I was in awe, I didn't know what to think. His recruiter, however, was one of the tomb guards. 'I've seen veterans fighting to get in their wheelchairs to pay respects to the unknown, and that's what really drove it home to me.'" Walking toward the tomb, Baker stopped to present a ceremonial white gloves to his mother, and arose to his wife and his son. He placed a single rose on the foot of each crypt, and rendered one final salute with his mother, wife, and son by his side. Baker exited the Tomb in the Plaza for the last time. "It's bittersweet, I know I'm leaving the tomb in good hands, those hands are the legacy of the Tomb Sentinels, who Baker said has watched grow through time at the tomb. He will miss the special brotherhood, but most importantly, will never forget the bond he shared with the unknowns." That's the spirit, and that's the dedication that Baker brings to Tampa Police Department. We're humbled, actually, to honor him, and all of his dedication and what he's brought to this community. We thank him for his service, and we thank him for everything that he's done, so, and great appreciation for him, and all of the men and women in Tampa Police Department who are like him, and they hold that value and that esteem in high regard. Thank you very much.
I'm supposed to talk now?
Yes, now it's your turn.
I just wanted to thank City Council, Chief Dugan, Chief Delgado, everyone who came out today, I'm very humbled by this, something I never expected that I would ever receive, so I thank you very much. I don't know what else to say, I'm at a loss for words, but thank you very much, I'm very humbled, I appreciate everything, thank you.
It's not a matter of you don't know what to say, it's a matter of your work has spoke for you, and people are saying the things that need to be said about your work ethic and what you've done. So a person who stood before that mic and received what you're receiving today, is what you did to get this honor and this accolade today. That's all that needs to be said, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Council.
Michelle, we'll go right along with the agenda, we've moved, Mr. Dean Feller, we have scratched item number two, that's going to be moved to a later date in time, in August, so we're going to go move up item number 44, which is FDOT, we ready for that presentation, Madam Deputy Clerk? You on the line, all right?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the introduction this morning, I'm going to actually turn this over to, I believe it's going to be Mr. Beatty, the City, who will do the introduction of Mr. Ken Spitz at FDOT. So thank you, sir, and thank you to all the committee this morning.
And if Vic is not available, I guess I'll have Mr. Ken Spitz do his own introduction.
Yeah, if you can all hear me, I am ready to go.
Oh, we're ready for you, we're ready.
Okay, great. I know there were some slides, I'm not thinking on my view, but I can go ahead if you want to get started on that.
Ms. Shelby, you're recognized, sir.
Is this, this is not video, is this audio only?
Okay, here's Vic now.
There's Vic. Morning, Chair, good morning, Council, sorry, wasn't clear about the schedule on item 44, I don't know if our FDOT partners are online and ready for this presentation, but if they are, I would invite them to log in right now.
I think they're on, I think they're on now.
That's great, that's great. So, today's presentation is part of our quarterly update from FDOT, and the topic of today's presentation is the Fowler Avenue Corridor Improvements. This project is critical for several reasons. One, it is in the Innovation Place District, where there are plans for additional development, bringing in tech talent, things like that, they look for safer bicycle pedestrian opportunities, among other things, and transit as well. This corridor is also part of the HART BRT study between downtown and the USF area, and this corridor is also in our high injury network. And this project does something really critical, which is intersection improvements, where about 50% of our crashes and fatalities happen. This is a national average, but it's somewhat similar for our region as well. And FDOT has been a great partner of ours on safety projects, so as always, we're really grateful to have them as partners, and I will hand it over to Ken to present on the Fowler Avenue project. Ken, take it away.
Thank you, Vic, waiting to see if we do have a PowerPoint.
A PowerPoint presentation was submitted, could we bring that up?
Do you have it? Ms. Shelby's checking, thank you, sir. Gentlemen, looking at the, gentlemen, I think we can get through this all before lunchtime. We can get through it. Am I adjacent?
Well, I take it a while, sir.
Mr. Spitz, can you share your screen, sir?
Yeah, let me try to.
Vic, do you have it? If, gentlemen, if we're not ready, you know, if we want to move this, this agenda along today, if we're not ready, we can just bring you back, Vic, if that's the case.
I think if Ken can share his screen, and if he's granted permission, we should be ready.
Okay, let me try that. All right, let me see if we can do that.
I always wonder, why don't you have a mic down there?
I apologize, it's giving me permission, but it's not changing screen.
Mr. Spitz, what we see right now is the go-to webinar screen. Are you using two monitors?
Yes, and that's why, I apologize again, I'm trying to get it to switch over to the other monitor, and it's not switching for some reason.
So if you look at your panel, you'll see the play button where it says "Show Screen." If you click that drop-down, you could switch the screen one or two.
Okay, let me see if I can get that. Get on my glasses, man.
Or you could drag your presentation into the screen where your go-to webinar is.
Gotcha.
There you go.
We had a bad deputy clerk, we got it.
There we go, okay.
All right.
Let me see if I can make this full screen also. Did that work?
Your presentation screen is up now.
Is that better?
Yeah.
You got it.
Okay, all right, thank you, I apologize for that. So, City Council, thank you for the invitation today, I'm glad to be here with you. My name is Kenneth Spitz, I'm the Transportation Planning Manager at FDOT District 7, and today we are going to be talking about some of our efforts on Fowler Avenue as part of the University Area Multimodal Possibility Study. A part of that was intersection improvements along Fowler Avenue, and so I will be talking about that today, and also with a little bit of an introduction into some new technologies, new methods that we're using to improve safety in the corridor. Those include something that's called LPI, or Leading Pedestrian Intervals, urban smart channels for right turns, and then we'll show you the proposed designs for several intersections along Fowler. On our intersection improvement projects for fiscal year 2022 to 2024, we are looking at a number of intersections from Nebraska all the way over to River Hills Drive. We are looking at five different intersection improvements, which I'll be talking about and showing you some slides in more detail today, and then leading pedestrian intervals, signal phasings at five locations, and brand-new full crosswalk installations at four other locations. Let's talk just for a moment on leading pedestrian interval. The idea of a leading pedestrian interval is to allow the pedestrians to be seen, be more visible to drivers. Anyone that's walked on the streets knows, you wait on the corner, and as soon as the light turns to walk, you proceed off of, into the intersection. At the same time, though, the green goes for the vehicles heading in the same direction as you are, and that can often create conflicts right at the beginning of crossing. So the idea with a leading pedestrian interval is we actually give the pedestrians a three to, say, 10-second, depending on the intersection, head start on their walk sign, so the cars behind them, for example, are still shown red while they're allowed to proceed into the intersection. The idea is, not only does this provide them more time to cross, but it provides better visibility so that drivers see that someone is in the intersection, in the crosswalk, and ready to go. Another idea that we're using on these projects is called an urban smart channel. Everybody that's driven understands the idea of a right turn lane, you've come up to it, there's sort of a sweeping rounded curb, as we know, many people, you know, the law requires you're supposed to stop where yield to anyone that's there, and then proceed when traffic allows, but oftentimes, because of that radius, people have a tendency to just sweep right on through. So the idea of an urban smart channel is, we tighten that radius up a little bit, it causes you not only to slow down when you're making that right-hand turn, it also presents you at a better angle to see pedestrians or other vehicles that are coming from your left, especially. So let's look at some of the proposals that we have at selected intersections. So this is Fowler Avenue at Nebraska Avenue. What you'll see in some cases, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but say, for example, in here, you might see some dashed lines that show where existing things are, and in that case, it's the curb line. So at Fowler Avenue in Nebraska, we have proposed to reduce the curb radii, which means that we bring the curb out further towards the intersection. This provides not only more area for people to wait in the crosswalk, it shortens the crosswalk distance. This is especially helpful not only for folks making the crossing, but in case people need extra time because of, say, physical challenges or age, it gives them more time, it's a shorter distance, so they're allowed to cross in a quicker amount of time. This is also an area where we would have the leading pedestrian interval signal, and that's depicted in the orange arrows. At Fowler Avenue and 15th Street, again, what's proposed here is to reduce the curb radii, again, to slow down turning speeds, and to reduce crossing distance. At 22nd Avenue, we do have extended areas in the middle, as you can see in the median, that provides a little bit more protection for pedestrians that maybe need to get across the street in two stages, as opposed to making the trip all in one. That just, it's a bit of a curb that sits out in front of it, we call it the nose of the curb, that provides a little bit, it's a barrier, provides a little bit more space for folks. It also shortens that radius on left turns, say, coming from the south or from the north that would be making those turns, and again, that helps pedestrians out. We've also, as I said there, extended the refuge, and also reduced curb radii. At Fowler Avenue and Bruce B. Downs, this is an area where we're talking about the urban smart channels, and you can see here how large they are also. Right now, that area is more, there's regular islands that are out there, but we want to change, I'm sorry, painted islands, but we want to change that to regular, kind of barrier curb islands. And what it also does here, as you can see, is it shortens the crossing distance to the island, again, offering another place for folks to wait for a signal. We will have the LPI signal here also. You can see that tightens up that intersection quite a bit. And then finally, at Fowler Avenue and 56th Street, again, here we have the urban smart channel islands, and the LPI signals, again, to help pedestrian crossing. You will also notice that there are some areas that have these kind of stripes, chevrons, and what those are for is, we do have a lot of truck turning traffic at this intersection. What we wanted to do, though, was shorten up the area that the vehicles see that they can use, and yet still allow the flexibility for larger trucks to make those turns. But again, this is an example of, as you can see, we're tightening up quite a bit on this intersection with the crosswalks and the urban smart channels. So those are five of the intersections that we are looking at doing physical improvements at. Other intersection improvements in the corridor, again, include leading pedestrian intervals, are being evaluated at all signals, the ones that I mentioned have already been approved. LED traffic signal upgrades at eight signals should be completed this this year, I believe they're, I believe they're installed already, but I would have to check on that to be sure. LED corridor lighting, that's the street lighting that also helps to illuminate pedestrians in the crossing areas at night, are programmed and will be installed along the corridor. To give you kind of a, and this might be a little tough to see, I apologize, but this gives you an idea of the implementation schedule coming forward for all of these projects. I will also mention, it was mentioned, I believe, by Vic, that we are looking also, a study has been done for the HART BRT, we want to be flexible in our designs in the future for whatever service HART may provide along Fowler, and so there has been a study that's been done on that, I was told today that you had an extensive agenda, so we wanted to provide you the intersection improvements first, we can always come back and show you some of the things that we've done on the concepts that we've come up with. concepts that we've come up with on the Fowler Avenue corridor to go along with the BRT service. Uh, so many of these are, uh, improvements are projected to happen within the next two fiscal years. Uh, and we have the funding, so we are going to proceed with those. And, uh, would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Spitzer, you recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't have any questions, just statements, I guess, if you will. Um, you know, one thing, and I guess it is a question, which is, you know, the Terrace Park, uh, Neighborhood Association out there has been doing so much work to try to improve the, the Bush area, and I work with them a great deal, and I just texted their President Lesam Ramos, who's such a nice gentleman. Uh, would, would our friends at FDOT be, uh, interested in briefing our friends on Bush Boulevard of these changes? I would assume the answer is yes.
Yes, we would.
Thank you, sir. And, and also at Forest Hills, maybe the, um, uh, Forest Hills Neighborhood Association, because, you know, th- this is an area that, uh, a, a lot of folks who, who live out there feel it's always very, very ignored, uh, and whatnot, and, uh, to see these, these things, that we've talked about numerous times, I've had many, many, uh, different discussions with FDOT, uh, on this, and other entities on this. Uh, but to see this in movement, like you said, within the next two fiscal years, I think will, will bring in a sense of relief, and that's very important. You know, this is, uh, an area that, that I represent, I know Councilman Gudes, uh, also represents parts of it and, and does a, a magnificent job, et cetera, on it as well. Uh, it's, uh, it's an area where I grew up in, I, I grew up in Temple Terrace, and it's funny, I was going through old family pictures a few days ago, and I saw this picture of me and my two brothers walking down Bush Boulevard, um, out where the Rubens Cubans used to be at, uh, with my grandfather. And we always joked that it's a miracle that we didn't get hit out there, um, because it was, we were kids running on, uh, on, on Bush Boulevard and whatnot. Um, but, uh, but it's, uh, too many pedestrian deaths out there, too many preventable bicyclist deaths, too many, uh, rear-end collisions and other accidents out there that can be prevented, uh, through the kind of measures that you've talked about. A lot of people out there in Bush and Fowler just feel like, uh, especially Bush Boulevard, uh, that, that local government has just abandoned them. And that the, the, the community on Bush Boulevard has just had a downward spiral turn. When it comes to actually Bu- Bush Boulevard, beautification of Bush Boulevard, emphasis on Bush Boulevard, the neighborhoods out there are strong, they're very, very strong neighbor- neighborhoods and doing very well. You know, we got to continue to fight for a lower speed limit on Bush Boulevard, something I'm very, very, very committed to. Um, we had Mel Loan, who's such a wonderful person, who's owned Mel's Hot Dogs, uh, for so very long, come in here about maybe a year and a half ago and, um, and, and talk about that. Oh, I, I was actually going to be doing a motion, uh, at the end of City Council on this area in a presentation that I want to have before City Council. And, and lest we forget, also to continue to keep our eyes on that great, robust investment that, that God willing will be coming if in two thousand twenty-two, uh, voters pass a, what, I guess what you could call a replacement penny sales tax, uh, which, you know, one of the reasons why I was such a strong supporter in two thousand eighteen of the All For Transportation Penny Sales Tax is because of this area that you're talking about here today. Uh, Bush, Fowler, the North Tampa area, badly in need of improvements, badly in need of, of, of better sidewalks, badly in need of robust mass transit investments. Um, it, to me, it all comes down to what I call a livability agenda, that local government can really play such an important part in making sure that areas are livable, that if you walk down Bush Boulevard, you have a God-given right to not be hit by a car. You know what I'm saying? And that we can make changes for that. So I just wanted to thank you all for your work, I know we've been working on this for a while, um, and it's a long time coming, but I, I wanted to thank you all for your work on that. So thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Central, you recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, councilmembers, I do not want to go on and on and on. First of all, I wanted to say thank you very much, sir, for this report. There is much-needed work that needs to be done on Bush Boulevard and Bruce B. Downs. Uh, FDOT has, has given so much in the past to, to, to things to make our streets better, with, um, with their help, with Vision Zero, with Complete Streets, and with, uh, biking on Greenspine. But I, and, and sir, you are a messenger, and, and please don't take this personally.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Council, I, I am adamantly opposed to any type of toll lanes, express lanes, or any other type of lanes that are designated for those who are better off than anybody else in the city of Tampa. You are, excuse me, FDOT is, 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 uh, giving us an option that only affects the people that live in that neighborhoods. And it's the neighborhoods between Howard Franklin and downtown. I am going to shout off a few names. And these are cities that are the same metropolitan-sized cities as Tampa. Some may be a little larger, some may be a little smaller. Baltimore, Miami, Minneapolis-St. Paul, the south side of Chicago, expressly Midway Airport, Cleveland, St. Louis, Salt Lake City, Seattle, and Portland. And they all have one thing in common. They have some sort of rail that goes from their airport to their downtown. We could save a lot of time and a lot of effort if we put rail from our airport to our downtown with stops for heartline at major intersections. West Shore, Lois, Dale Mayberry, Heims, MacDill, and downtown. So the people that would be affected the most by this rail could also use it to get to their work in downtown. Again, these Lexus lanes, these toll lanes that are proposed on two seventy-five will not be any benefit to any neighborhoods that they cross, cross through. They will affect those neighborhoods the most. Mr. Chair, I've ranted too much, sir, again, I thank you for all the hard work and this presentation that you've given us. I just had to say that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir, it was, Mr. Delfin, you recognized.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, um. Well, you guys are going to be hesitant to come make quarterly reports, uh, just.
Not, not at all, our pleasure.
Anyway, um. So I was driving down Hillsborough Avenue the other day. And, um, and I know you guys, that y'all had, I think, just finished some large projects on Hillsborough and repaved it, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know what else you did over the last couple of years, but it looked like a lot of work. But boy, when I drive down Hillsborough, it's just a big slab of concrete, a big slab of asphalt. And it doesn't look like a whole lot of beautification, you know, and, and I know Ms. Salsana over here at Council and worked with DOT for many years, uh, you know, beautifying Kennedy and, and some of our other boulevards. Um, but boy, Hillsborough Avenue is just barren. And, and, and I don't know if there were, if there were ever any plans, you know, to put in some trees and put in some shrubs and put in some medians with, with some greenery or what have you. But it's just, it's just sad and hot and, I don't know, everything that I thought we were going away from. Any, any comments on that?
Well, and, and the group that, um, that I head up in transportation planning, I know that we had done a corridor study for Hillsborough Avenue, and I believe there were some aspects of that that were recommended. Um, the group that I'm in planning, um, we, um, put forward recommendations, they then, as you know, because of resources, things have to be prioritized when things are done. So I, I do not know, though, personally, the, the status of those efforts on landscaping particularly. Uh, but we do take those kind of issues into account when we do our planning studies. Uh, I can tell you, um, everything that's been mentioned earlier, pedestrian, bicycling, transit, um, but I can come back and, and present to you on the other things that we've done on Fowler in terms of the concepts that we've come up with, all include premium transit.
Well, you know, when I, when I, when I think of, when I think about a, a livable city and, and bicycling and pedestrians and that sort of thing, who's going to want to ride a bike and who's going to want to walk on a, on a street that is so miserably hot? I mean, it's, it's very busy and there's not a lot, I mean, we're going to try and, you know, help fix that with some lone, lane diets and that sort of thing like you described.
Right, right.
But if it's just so miserably hot and there's no shade, uh, you know, who's going to want to bicycle or walk on those, on those major, you know, avenues and boulevards? And what I was driving the other day, Councilman Gudes will be proud of me, was the east side, East Hillsborough. But as I, when I look at, when I look at both sides of Hillsborough, they're really, they're, they're really about the same. East Hillsborough and West Hillsborough are just big barren, you know, um, segments of asphalt to flush people in and out without any aesthetics whatsoever. So if, if you could talk to whoever deals with those issues more specifically and
Sure.
and maybe give us an update on that next quarter, we'd appreciate it.
I, I'd be happy to carry that message for you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Carson, you recognized.
Yeah, just quickly, thank you all for giving this update, and just for anybody from the public watching, we ask them to give us an update, they're, we, we don't vote on anything, we just appreciate them giving us an update, and it's for the community also. Um, and I want to say, as a representative of South Tampa, I look forward to getting together with you all and catching up on South Tampa, and I know you rotate through different parts of the city, and we appreciate that. But one thing I want to say is, um, with my other job, um, I, I've done business all over the world and, um, traveled almost a hundred countries now, and, and with the CEOs that I meet around the world, the ones that have been to Tampa, almost all of them have only been to Bush Gardens. And most of them are at, staying at Disney and Universal, and then they come over to Bush Gardens. And so I've said this before, but, um, I appreciate you all focusing on Fowler and, and Bush also because they really are the gateway to Tampa. That, most of the CEOs that, from overseas, and we want their investment in Tampa, their impression of Tampa is Bush Boulevard and Fowler Avenue, because they're coming across I-4, and then they go, they go down, uh, Bush and, and Fowler. And so we need to think of those roads, um, not just as places for the, the neighborhoods and the businesses that are there, which is critically important, but also because, uh, they're how the rest of the world sees us, and if they're impressed with the design of the roads and the, the livability of it, and they're open as the business, uh, they're going to invest in our community, so thank you.
Anyone else? Well, Mr. Dinkfelder, let me say this, you know. You, 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 you roll the bowling ball and hit the pins. Because my friend, I'm going right there when I look at Hillsborough Avenue and, uh, ML King. Hillsborough Avenue is a dump. Let me just say that. I've got so many calls on Hillsborough Avenue, how it's been butchered up. Black streets here, concrete here. I, I called myself the Secretary's office because no one's monitoring the work out there. Late at night, cutting the concrete and all the dust with no water is going on everyone's property, everyone's cars. What we don't care about over here is, you know, it's just over here in the east side of town. So I, I'm just saying, Mr. Dinkfelder's right, we need some kind of update, even though we know we've got this innovation zone for Fowler and, and so forth and so on, and, and, and because the university's there, we want to make sure it looks good, and we got Bush Gardens, uh, you know, that's always said before, which gardens is our hotspot, which Boulevard looks like, uh, you know, it's a little bit better than Hillsborough Avenue, I can tell you that. But I'm going to tell you this, Hillsborough Avenue is a dump, and the, the residents who pay taxes are tired of looking at it and tearing up their cars. The road is uneven over there, and somebody needs to really do a study of that Hillsborough Avenue and see how we can fix that place up. Like you said, with some aesthetic, I, I don't, it just needs to be really, really looked at. I don't know what studies have been done, but whoever's doing them need to take a real look at them and really go out there and look at Hillsborough Avenue. You may as well prove with some of these, uh, light, uh, poles and things, probably the underground poles, what have you. But when people drive down there and the residents see, and things were said, it looks horrible. So I'm hoping next quarter you can give us an update on Hillsborough Avenue, because it really looks horrible. Anyone else, gentlemen? You go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, sir, go ahead.
No, no, I was just going to say, I'd be happy to carry those, um, um, that's construction project, that's a little bit outside of my area that I deal with, but again, I'll be happy to carry that message back for you.
We understand, we understand, you're just, you're giving a plan here, but you, you can take it back to the powers that be, so we can bring, we get the message back to us this time, you know. Anyone else, gentlemen?
Absolutely.
Vic, anything from you, sir?
Uh, no comments from me, we continue to work with, uh, FDOT. We've got a great leader in Secretary Gwynn, uh, and we will bring this up with them. Uh, I can tell you Hillsborough Avenue has been studied. Uh, the biggest priority, of course, is safety on Hillsborough Avenue being a very busy arterial. And you've seen the commitment from DOT with, uh, reducing pedestrian fatalities, which have gone down, and incremental improvements. But the point of our beautification, quality of life, is certainly well taken, and we'll work with the department.
All right, Vic, no problem, and people's cars, because they're, they're saying their tires are being damaged. But we thank both of you for your presentations, and we look forward to that next quarterly meeting, thank you both.
All right, thank you.
We'll move on to public comments, so let's steamroll through that, uh, second floor.
Good morning, Councilmen, my name is Andrew Moore, I'm here with the Bowman Heights Neighborhood Association, I am the Vice President of it. I'm here to, uh, ask for your help on an issue that we've been having for the last several years. A couple of weeks ago, you guys passed an ordinance unanimously for moving Chapter, uh, twenty-seven to fifteen to help combat, uh, commercial parking in residential districts. This is a, this is a shot of my neighborhood, this is what it looks like every morning, and this is just one part of it. We are ransacked with commercial vehicles, and when I go to code enforcement and zoning, they say that these are not commercial vehicles. Now, I believe that the ordinance is in place, will provide for this and allow us to classify these as commercial vehicles, but code enforcement and zoning doesn't see it. I'm going to go ahead and show you the, the definition for commercial vehicles real quick. Vehicles, machinery, or furnishings owned, used, or designed intended for commercial use, except that of a personal vehicle or one car truck, uh, used by an individual for transportation to and from home and the job sites, will not be considered commercial vehicles, regardless of, in, of commercial names or insignias or markings advertised on the vehicle. It's important that this picture I just showed you, it talks about transportation to, from, and from home and the job site for an individual. There are no homes here, this is the grand entrance to my neighborhood, and there is no job site here, these vehicles are parked. The other thing is, is Section twenty-eight, or Section twenty-seven, two eighty-three eleven, the parking of commercial equipment in residential districts is prohibited. I'm going to go ahead and just skip a little bit of it, but shall not prevent temporary parking. This parking, it's not temporary, it happens every single day. It's been going on for the last four years. Also requires that vehicles be used on a lot as an, as an accessory to lawful commercial use at the same residential lot. There's no residential lot here. And this happens day in and day out. Okay? We even have school buses, and our children come through here and wait for the bus stop. I know that, uh, Councilman, uh, Charlie Miranda, you were concerned when you passed that ordinance two weeks ago, or last month, about children and, and commercial vehicles. Around the corner from the picture that I just showed you, again, are more vehicles from the same business that park, this is a residential lot. Code enforcement and zoning say that these aren't commercial vehicles and that this isn't commercial use. I don't know if they're blind or they can't read the ordinances. Maybe they need a better healthcare plan for the city because they can't see. There are more commercial use on this lot here, which is Zone CG, and it's only zoned for two vehicles. Of course, they pack it full. Here's the same angle from, from the reverse side on a different day. All, these are commercial vehicles on a residential lot right here. Same here, this is a lot that's Zone CG for two vehicles, and they pa- park multiple vehicles there every day. I'm calling on, on you all to provide clarity for these definitions and for these ordinances. I, I feel like zoning and code enforcement is confused, and we need help on this issue. I appreciate your time and thank you for hearing my issue.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mascal, you recognize, sir?
If I could just respond to some of the comments, I agree with the gentleman in what, not just what he's shown uh, in the photographs, but how can this not be considered commercial? You have a business logo on the side of a vehicle. If you put a business name on the side of the vehicle, I'm assuming that that's already a tax write-off for the, for the business, because you're using a vehicle for commercial purposes, advertising whatever it is. I would also assume that the business pays for the insurance as a business expense for those drivers. So I don't know why code enforcement, or whomever, is not considering these vehicles as commercial vehicles. They're parked everywhere, they're parked on the right-of-way. I was looking, I know there's not sidewalks everywhere there, but if someone's in a motorized wheelchair or if a, a mother is pushing a stroller, are they going to go out into the street? Because clearly these vehicles are blocking any type of access. Mind you, there, there may not be the sidewalk all the way, but they have to go out into the street because you saw, you saw the photos. Um, you saw the photos of, uh, where the school bus went through, what about emergency vehicles? I mean, they're basically, those are I mean, they're basically, those are large vehicles, they're taking up a lot of space. And I understand the gentleman's frustrations. It's, it's a nightmare, it's a mess. I just don't understand why code enforcement can't see it separately and why they're not considered commercial vehicles.
I think Ms. Gwynn is listening in, so hopefully she'll be able to get with the code enforcement manager and legal and can address that concern with you, Mr. Maniscalco, and get back to us.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, and, and thank you. And I recognize Councilman Maniscalco's comments, but I just want to remind council that perhaps a motion to ask for information may be in order. But what, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting to you, especially if you're going to entertain comments, is I'm not, I'm not sure in what form or fashion this could very well become before council. So remaining mindful of that and remaining mindful, I believe there has been, this is an ongoing issue from what I can recall relative to this location and this business. So I don't know what is presently pending, if anything. So I'm going to ask council to choose your words carefully as opposed to... Stating, stating a conclusion is what I'm asking you not to do. In other words, you could pass judgment on what you've seen, but just please remain mindful that this could come back to council in some form or fashion. It certainly can be perhaps even a subject of potential litigation. It may very well have been in the past.
Mr. Shelby, let's put it on a new business, Mr. Scow, Mr. Maniscalco can make that motion on a new business, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry to go on too long.
No problem, sir. Let's continue with the public comment.
Good morning, Council. My name is Victor Dubai. I'm president of the Bowman Heights Neighborhood Association. You heard from my board member, Andrew Moore. I wanted to thank the council like I did last time when you all passed this ordinance unanimously and it was just signed by the mayor just last week. We met Monday with the zoning department and Mr. O'Connell or Donald, I guess, from zoning, the code enforcement. And we were shocked after working for years with you guys. And it was reviewed, this ordinance was reviewed by the city attorney's office as well. And by the way, there is no pending issue at the time according to answer Mr. Shelby's question. So what we were shocked and disappointed was, as, as you saw all those pictures for those commercial vehicles, it's clearly spelled out on the ordinance because for years this has been a volleyball between TPD, code enforcement, can we write a ticket, can we not write a ticket? We thought this would finally be a resolution to an issue where commercial vehicles were parking in a residential neighborhood. That not just for Bowman Heights, but for the entire city of Tampa. So according to the convoluted logic of code enforcement, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's actually a squirrel. Because as the councilman just pointed out, this commercial vehicle that you see, according to their logic, if, if the employee drives it home and brings it back, it's not considered a commercial vehicle, which is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life. But that's what they're going by. So, yes, we do need clarity on this. I have something on the overhead I wanted to show you. If you could, if you could turn to that for a second. We could, so we can show where this problem actually is. And what we're asking for, and we voted for this over, our board voted this for, we've been working on this for a couple of years. As you can see, all the commercial vehicles parked here in what we call our grand entrance. Now, a couple of years back when we had problems on the, on the riverfront park by the Columbus Drive Bridge, the city came and put no parking signs on the entire riverfront, which is a public park. And what we were asking for, for relief, to solve this immediately and why it hasn't been done in two years, is to put no parking on the right of way signs right here on Kathleen and on Albany and our, what we call our grand entrance. From 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So the neighbors can use it and we can avoid this problem we're having because zoning, by the way, also reduced the parking when the old Henry Gonzalez parking, which is used by this business, from 23 spots to 17 spots. So all the other 30 vehicles that he uses parks throughout our entire neighborhood. So if we can restrict that one, these, these little blocks right here to no parking on the right of way from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, I believe that will resolve our issues. But the other issue of commercial vehicles needs to be addressed and needs to be resolved because the, the pass the buck thing is still going on. I'm sorry?
Let you finish up your statement so we can move on.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm done. I, I didn't hear the bell, but I...
Quite all right, sir, quite all right.
I had a question to Mr. Demille.
Sure, sure.
If I could, Mr. Chairman. Vic, can you put that picture back up for us?
Yes, it's up, it's on the, well, it's on the overhead if they want to cut to it.
Okay. Directly to the north of the facility, it looks like there's three or four houses. Are those still active residential houses?
Yeah, this is residential, this is residential, this is residential. All these are all residential, single-family homes. These lots that this business bought, this is residential, single-family residence. And these three lots here are residential, single-family homes. The only thing that's commercial is this old Henry Gonzalez parking lot and he tried to make them commercial for parking. But unfortunately, there's an estuary that feeds directly into Hillsborough River. So if you make this a parking lot, all the oil and grease from those cars will go directly into the river and pollute the river. So there is an issue with this particular lot. I don't know what the resolution is, but yes.
All right, and one other question is, when he showed the pictures earlier of the, of the vans parking on the street, do those, do those vans, I mean, do they go home at night with the, with the employees? Or, or do they bring their cars and leave the vans there at the office?
I don't know how he runs the business, but as you can see, some vans stay and some vans go. So there's a, there's a, there's a handful of vans to spend the night and the rest, I guess, go home with the employees. But during the day, all day long, this is what, if you want to show the overhead picture...
Can you finish your question, Mr. Dinkfelder?
I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Demille. We're, we're gonna look into this matter. For time constraints, we just got to move on, but thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
I think Mr. Maniscalco is gonna make a motion in a new business, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
I would just like to say, my first encounter with Chief Dugan, maybe some 20 years ago, started out going to Internal Affairs, ended up with some very strong words to him. But throughout the years, one thing that I can say for him, he has not had a deaf tone to the issues of the community. And so in his retirement, of course, we wish him well. I'm here regarding item number 47. I'm hoping that that is a written report that the community can look at as well. We would like to also encourage that we focus down in terms of the community block grant money. We've been talking about the issues of poverty for so, so very long. We know that organizations do receive a lot, sums of money inside of impoverished neighborhoods. But when we take a look at those in our communities, not much has changed until developers come along. The very communities that has been designated as being blighted, slums, drug-infested, crime-ridden, the same soil when it's turned over. What we are seeing now is our communities are being heavily gentrified, become welcoming sight. I'm thinking about Tampa Park Apartments, Robles Park and most of all of East Tampa with limited resources are being able to be utilized by the neighborhood. Also, at 3609 North 15th Street, a company by the name of Nutrition Solution. My criticism is not against the company because it has come into this East Tampa community to provide jobs and opportunity. But when you go back on a one-in-and-out road, a one-way road, you see parking and to yet today, I have not heard the criticism of the community where there's over 50 cars parked on that one street every morning. Used to be a sandwich shop, but what has been so amazing about this business at 3609 North 15th Street is the use of containers. The containers to two-story containers, shipping containers on, that is being utilized for freezers, that's being utilized for office space in Red and East Tampa. And yet, when the community is asking for a transformation and we have seen transformation of the Old Water Department on Nebraska Avenue, but when the community in East Tampa is asking for a transformation on how we can utilize our building that the CRA purchased, well over $200,000...
Give me 20 seconds, Mr. Burton.
Okay. We still get a resounding no. And we are just hoping that the community is paying attention to those that are telling us no, that want to see our community in such despair until developers come. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Ms. Burton talked about that place. I took a travel with Ms. Carol Post the other day and first thing she saw is why are all these cars and junk cars on this street? So I can tell you, Ms. Carol Post, who took a tour of East Tampa with me, had an eye-opening experience and she saw some things and she's gonna be working on them because she thinks some things need to be done. So, just for the record.
Good to do.
Mrs. Gwynn, though.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council. My name is John Grandoff. My address is Suite 3700, Bank of America Plaza. I'm here at Public Comments on behalf of my client, Domain Homes, which owns several properties in West Tampa. There, there's a significant problem with the zoning code and I'm gonna ask that you pass a resolution this morning requesting that the mayor direct the building department to not enforce a particular rule that I would like to explain to you. On February 4th, the city council passed an ordinance which stated, in picture, home construction. If an existing alley, if you, excuse me, if an existing lot is adjacent to an open and used public alley vehicular access to the site shall be provided from the alley as the primary vehicular access point, provided it meets minimum standards, et cetera, et cetera. Asked you, how did you leave your home this morning when you got in your car? The planning commission adopted a resolution supporting this strict rule, but it had a finding that they wanted to provide street-fronting uses with eyes on the street. The planning commission resolution was approved and then your staff provided a report to you in this format on February 4th on commercial development. They suggested efforts shall be made to provide vehicular access and flow where an alley exists. And that's on a commercial. However, on residential, they suggested alley access shall be provided when possible. And then finally, the ordinance becomes codified in Chapter 27, verbatim what I just read to you. Now, what's going on? My client has several projects in permitting that have been, not been denied permits because they do not provide driveways on the front street and they're ordering that all access be provided through an alley, whether improved or not improved. Now, my client has done some dialogue with the city staff and the city staff is recently, as July 12th, reported the intent of this neighborhood-initiated text amendment was to prevent driveways at the front of the house. So it definitely violates the spirit of the code. What, what this gentleman, Andy McColsky, is saying is, our request to have a front driveway like you have at your house and what my client bargained for when he bought the property and what others have bargained for when they've bought houses is to prevent that without compensation. That is a property right that's been denied by this ordinance. I submit to you, the ordinance is a taking and that the bowling department should be ordered not to enforce it any longer.
Yes, sir. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I know we're trying to avoid questions. Mr. Grandoff, can you go, go back to your letter, the letter, the last thing you had up?
Sure. Let me give you some context. This is an email back and forth between Fred Henry at Domain to Mr. McColsky at the, at the city zoning department. And the context is Mr. Henry is asking for some type of exception to this, this, this drastic rule. And Mr. McColsky is reporting back that this, the intent of this neighborhood-initiated text amendment was to prevent driveways at the front of the house.
So, so the houses that they're proposing, are they, are they rear-loaded garages?
No, they're just front...
They're front-loaded garages?
Typical front...
Standard Domain Homes. So I did think it was the intent of the West Tampa, the West Tampa group and, and the overlay, the West Tampa overlay and the modifications to try and take West Tampa back to that old style of, of rear-loaded garages when there's an alley and rear-loading is, is, is an opportunity, is available. I, I did think that that was the intent of that to, you know... Now, in those situations where there's no alley, the alley doesn't function right or something like that, sure, there, there should or could or should be exceptions. But, but that was my understanding was that was the intent of the West Tampa overlay revisions to, to try and guide and push homes to have rear-loading.
May I ask my reply?
Well, please.
There's no evidence that that's how West Tampa developed, that everyone using the alley. It's ridiculous. They use the front driveway if they had a car in the 1940s and 50s. The solution that the zoning department has proposed is just file a design exception and we'll look at it. Well, that's a process just to do a process? You don't do that to remedy a deficient land use law. It's infirm.
Can we do this, sir, for the sake of time?
Yeah.
Make whatever motion you want to make to have, so you serve a legal look into that? We can move along. I know you'll probably have a lot of questions you can get with your representative, sir? Don't mind?
Sure, no, that's fine. I just wanted to get some clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandoff, for your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen.
We're moving on to public comment.
Huru. Huru means freedom in Swahili. It's nothing like coming to your city council meeting where the citizens come to grievances or do whatsoever they do, give their side of the story and they get rudely rushed off and rushed out. Used to that. They get rudely rushed off and rushed out because of some expedience purpose. This is what this is all about. This is what people wait for on Thursday mornings to talk about. Would any of the city council members know the value of this budget? Would any of the city council members up there, the six or seven of them up there, would they know the value of this budget, of this city council agenda? Would they know the total value of it? That's a question. And I can assure you, they don't have the answer. They have a budget up here week after week like clowns and they don't know the value of it. And it shows you for our representative in our districts, and that's what I've been saying since Perry Harvey's been here. They don't know the value of it. This budget is valued at about $84 million. $84 million. We're 26% of this population. We want 26% of this budget. What do they give to African people? Okay, I'll tell you what they give to African people. They treat us like children and like clowns. They give us parks. They give us dumb stuff. They give us roundabouts. And here, on this budget, they giving you something about the Buffalo Soldiers. Somebody should be ashamed. That's an insult. Why don't we do some kind of accreditation or some kind of award to the Confederate soldiers? It's an insult to the Buffalo Soldiers. It's an insult to the indigenous population. But our representatives have to know that. Buffalo Soldiers shouldn't be up here at all. It's a waste of time. It's a waste, it's an insult to the aspiration of the human being. The Buffalo Soldiers was not good to the indigenous population. Plain and simple. They're no different from the Confederate Soldiers. And that's where people get racism confused. That's where they get it confused because they can't distinguish between racism and hatred overall. So they confuse it with racism, with sexism, with religion and with other stuff. Hatred is hatred, plain and simple. And so in order for this city to move forward, we're 26% of this population. We demand 26% of this budget. We demand 26% of this budget, week after week. We demand 26% of this budget. Plain and simple. And what we do with it and how we utilize it is our business. It'd have to be in the best interest of the people, but how we utilize it, we can't go about 1% of the budget and under, year after year. Where's African people moving? Nowhere. And the fact of the matter is, when it said what's going on with 15th and Lake, it's not to hurt that business. I'm sure that's not what the system mean. We want to see business in our community. But what we're saying is, when we try to do something inside our communities, it don't work that way. It's always some pushback from the city and from other individuals.
Thank you, Ms. Tiznack, for your comments. Thank you. Get you a little coke that'll make that much noise, Mr. Cotton. Morning, sir.
Morning. Yeah, I'm here to talk a bit on item three.
Can you state your name for us?
Oh, my name's David Jones.
Thank you, sir.
Cool. Yeah, I'm here to speak a bit on item three, where y'all are going to approve, what, $150,000, a little over $150,000 for four, yeah, for four new police interceptors. Y'all keep throwing money at, y'all keep throwing money at the police here in Tampa. We saw it last summer when y'all raised the police budget, what, like $13 million more than it was the year prior? And we saw it again when y'all decided to allocate $100 million to relocate the TP HQ and that city center over to East Hanna Avenue off Seminole Heights. And y'all keep throwing this money at these, y'all keep throwing money at police. Y'all keep throwing money. Y'all keep putting money towards this without, to try and fix problems that y'all think are going on in East Tampa, without actually considering the real problems in East Tampa. The problems like the fact that there is no affordable housing, that rent prices are going up, that single-family homes are starting to go up to almost $2,500 a month everywhere in East Tampa. The fact that the houses' population has been increasing significantly with COVID. The fact that there are still a lot of people in Tampa who aren't vaccinated and aren't necessarily sure how that they can, who aren't necessarily sure how they can get vaccinated, and there's no real plan being done to make sure that those people are taken care of, make sure that those people are, you know, housed, fed, and all that jazz. So, all this money keeps going towards cops without considering the actual needs of the community, without listening to the community, and getting real community out input on, before y'all are making these decisions, like we saw at this HQ where it was rushed during, what, less than two, three weeks? And that's not right. It's not right for y'all to keep throwing money at things that aren't helping everyday folks, and things that aren't going to help everyday folks. If you see a problem not getting fixed, if y'all keep doing something and the problem's not getting fixed, you need to take another approach. And that new approach is by actually listening to the people that y'all are trying to help, by actually going to, by actually letting the folks on the ground, like the CRAs who are directly influenced, who, you know, are people from that community, actively living there, actively, you know, speaking out on what they need, but they aren't getting the funds that they need to, they aren't getting the money that they need to do what needs to be done to make sure that their people are good. So, yeah, overall, I'm pretty much just saying, like, y'all gotta stop putting money towards cops who don't necessarily need it, start putting it towards the people, putting it towards the people.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. We appreciate it. Thank you.
No more speakers at this time.
Thank you, sir. Have a, we have registered deputy clerk. One person, all right.
Good morning. We have Tina Swain. Tina, if you're on the line, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hello. Tina Swain had to step out. This is Ron Score with Habitat for Humanity. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Super. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. Tina ran out for another presentation, and I have just some comments from Tina that I'd like to share with you. The state of Florida is expected to receive $17 billion from the American Rescue Plan. $7 billion will be split up between the county and city governments around the state. City of Tampa and Hillsborough County are expected to receive more than $300 million in COVID-19 relief funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. During the past year, Habitat for Humanity's cost to build has increased by an average of $18,000 per home. This cost increase has been caused by supply chain shortages and resulting price adjustments, increased costs for lumber and other materials, and an increase in labor costs, all due to COVID-19 and the related impacts. For the coming year, Habitat Hillsborough must raise almost $600,000 in additional donations or other funding to make up the extra cost to build the 32 homes that we have planned for this year. These expenses are on top of costs for land and engineering needed to get projects to the vertical construction stage. Habitat Hillsborough has a successful track record of serving applicants who do not have enough income to be served by other homeowners. Our ability to serve lower-income households is due in part to our ability to generate our own mortgages that maintain affordability for our applicants. In addition, we have the experience to leverage grant dollars with the support of sponsorships and donations and volunteer labor. Rational for this proposal, our request, is based on the U.S. Treasury Fact Sheet, which was emailed to each of you. My comments are a request that a portion of the stimulus funds be made directly available for affordable homeownership programs, such as down payment assistance so low-income families can build the wealth and break the cycle of poverty through housing. Another point to consider is that investment in homeownership will help close the wealth gap in our community. According to Joint Center for Housing Studies at Harvard University, the black-white homeownership gap stood at 28.1% points in the first quarter of 2021. We must do better. The Joint Center for Housing Studies further observed that with interest rates near historic lows, down payment assistance programs would give a substantial lift to homeownership rates among households of color with insignificant savings, coupled with homebuyer education and counseling as used in the Habitat program. This support has the potential to reduce the black-white homeownership gap by 12 percentage points and Hispanic white gap by 4 percentage points. Whatever process is used for the deployment of American Rescue Funds, please make it possible for nonprofits to access this funding. If Tampa can provide an allotment directly to affordable housing nonprofit organizations, Habitat Hillsborough will do an excellent job putting these funds to use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is that it, Madam Deputy Clerk?
That's going to conclude Public Comments for the general Public Comment section. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Hey, let's jump into our, to send, General Item, first is Public Safety Committee, Ms. Citro, Items 3 through 4. You can move those, sir.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move Items 3 and 4.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Maniscalco. Roll call.
Vera.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
And Goos.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Maniscalco, Parks and Recreation, 5 through 7.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move out on 5 through 7.
Second.
Second, my Ms. Miranda. Roll call vote, please.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
And Goos.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Ms. Dingfelder, Public Works, Items 8 through 19, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move those items.
Second, my Ms. Miranda, roll call vote, please.
Miranda.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Goos.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Finance Committee, Ms. Miranda, Items 20 through 24, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Move Items 20 through 24.
Second.
Roll call.
Second.
I'm sorry, but Ms. Citro, second. Motion. Roll call.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
And Goos.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Carlson, Building and Zoning, excluding Item Number 27 for staff report.
Yes, sir. I'd like to move 25 through 29 minus 27.
Second.
Second, my Ms. Miranda, roll call vote.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
And Goos.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Vera, Transportation, Items 30 through 37, sir.
Yes, sir. Move Items 30 through 37.
Second.
Second, my Ms. Miranda, roll call vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
And Goos.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Move Items 38 through 39, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Miranda has open ears. Mr. Citro, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? We're not open. All right, review hearing number 38, question was draw petition.
So I'm going to strike, strike 38.
Motion by Mr. Dingfelder, second by Mr. Miranda. We in a roll call in that, Mr. Shelby? No roll call necessary?
Not necessary.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? Most carried. Item 39.
Was that judicial hearing, Mr. Chairman? Move it open, please.
They, Mrs. Miranda, open the hearing, sir.
They are, they are open. I missed the.
We are open. Yes, sir, we've already opened.
Thank you.
All right, item 39, review hearing.
I believe staff is going to be able to make a presentation. Staff is present? Yes.
All right, Eric Cotton, how you doing? Morning, sir.
Yes, sir. How are y'all, counsel? Um, I'm on, I'm on. Sorry, I need to get sworn in.
Mr. Shelby, sworn in, Ms. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Is there a petitioner involved in this, Mr. Cotton? Is there somebody registered?
Ms. Cotton, anybody registered for this, sir?
I didn't have anyone.
There should be, yes.
You don't have anybody registered? All right, maybe on the second floor. Okay. All right, proceed, sir.
Thank you, counsel. May I share my screen, please? Does counsel see the presentation? Do y'all see this PowerPoint? There it is. Okay, thank you. So, again, Eric Cotton landed on the coronation.
Mr. Cotton, I think a legal wants to jump in there. Just go on.
Good morning. That was the City Council. I apologize. Good morning. I'm the City Attorney's Office. The second was before you, petition filed by Cedric Powell. He's the applicant for the Special Use 1 general request for the property located at 1908 North 36th Street. He is seeking review from the zoning administrator's decision denying the private recreational facility use, which requested relief from 27132. Earlier, counsel was provided with a copy of the hearing procedures for today's review, as well as sample motions. For purposes of today's hearing, City Council approves the de novo standard of review. Your decision is not limited to the record created by the zoning administrator. Instead, you can take public testimony, accept new evidence, and make a decision based upon the application, meeting the criteria set forth in Section 27132 and the general provisions of Code Section 27129. Mr. Cotton will provide an overview of the relief requested and the application and the basis for the city's decision. After considering all the evidence introduced into the record of today's hearings, City Council may uphold the zoning administrator's decision and thereby deny the Special Use 1 application, or council may overturn the zoning administrator's decision and thereby approve the application for Special Use 1. With that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Cotton, but I did, hopefully, the council members have all the relevant sample motions and relevant code sections.
You have, thank you. Ms. Dingfelder, you recognized.
Thank you. Just as a matter of procedure and disclosure, Mr. Powell was my life insurance agent for God knows how many years, 15-plus years. I believe he's resigned from that company and to do the development stuff that he's doing. And as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, he's doing a great job. But anyway, so I've known him for many years. We did business together for many years as my life insurance salesman, but I don't believe there's any relevant conflict. Mr. Shelby, you're welcome to chime in.
The question, Mr. Dingfelder, is can you be fair and impartial and base your decision on the evidence in the case and rely on the, solely on the evidence?
Yes, totally.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shelby, for the record, I do know Mr. Powell as well, former student of mine at Robinson High School, many, many years ago, but again, that shows no bearing on this case today, sir.
And you can be fair and impartial based on the evidence?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, as another disclosure on this particular cigar factory, and I might have mentioned this before, is as a Realtor, I actually participated in the sale of this building from some very nice church folks to a different group, a different entity, who I guess now has sold it to Mr. Powell. But like I said, that was like four or five years ago. Again, Mr. Shelby, I can be fair and impartial. Thank you.
And you have no financial interest in this matter?
No connection whatsoever. I haven't, haven't talked to any of these folks about this for four or five years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Cotton can proceed with his presentation.
Mr. Cotton.
Good morning again, counsel. Again, this is Special Use SU 121-35. The applicant is Cedric Powell, Cedric Powell, for property in 1908 North 36th Street. This is Teheran Del Lago Cigar Factory. I believe it has second reading next week, considered for a local historic landmark. Current zoning on the property is R16. The applicant was requesting a special use for recreational facility, private. So, private recreational facility are those that are membership-only, like country clubs, meeting halls, boys and girls clubs, country club golf courses, tennis clubs, versus like a Planet Fitness or a paintball court. Those would be commercial, those would be recreational facility, commercial. So there's a couple of standards that need to be met for the requirement. One, it has to be limited, if it's not limited to membership, to people who are adjacent to the property, directly along the local streets, then it has to have access onto an arterial or collector roadway. In this case, the property did not have that. It did not meet that requirement, so we cannot deny it for that reason. The other requirements that are set forth in the code is it has to have, it can't have parking for the use within 25 feet of adjacent residential zoning districts.
Excuse me, Mr. Cotton.
In this case, the parking and loading areas are within the 25%. Yes, sir?
Mr. Cotton, I didn't hear that first portion when you said deny because of, was it on arterial? Is that what you said, sir?
Yes, sir. It does not have direct access on an arterial or collector road. 16th Street is considered a local road by the street map. So as a result, staff, we cannot approve it at our level. We deny it, and the applicant can then file a petition for review and go to City Council. I just want to show you, this is the area map. This is East 7th Avenue. The highlighted in red is the property in question. This is North 36th Street. There's commercial across the street from the property, and it is surrounded by residential, residentially zoned properties. This was the site plan. As you can see, the park, proposed parking is adjacent to residential zone property on both the north and the, excuse me, on both the south and the west. So this is the property, this is the cigar factory. These are the two we use. One, the first one was from 16th. This is from the side street. This is the adjacent use. It's a church. This is to the west. But the church is zoned residential multifamily. This is the property to the east. I'm not sure what the use was. It's another very old-looking building. I believe the 1905 might actually refer back to the year it was built. And these are the properties to the north and south, which are just single-family homes. So, I can stop sharing my screen. So, as a result, staff, at the staff level, again, we had to deny their request. The applicant would then file the petition for review and go to City Council to ask for approval for the use itself. You have any questions for me? I'll be more than happy to try and answer them for you.
Mr. Cotton, you said the only reason for the deny was because the facility is not on arterial, correct?
Well, two reasons. The arterial and collector roadway, and having the parking within 25 feet of residentially zoned property.
Thank you, sir.
Both of those are wavable by City Council, if you so choose.
Thank you. Any question for council members? Any question for council members? I guess we'll hear from the applicant. Is the applicant on two? All right, there he is.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, we recognized.
Yes, just to be sworn in, please.
Deputy Clerk, could you swear Mr. Powell in, please?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, you may proceed. State your name, Mr. Powell.
My name is Cedric Powell, born and raised here in Tampa. Like mentioned earlier, I'm a, I graduated at Robinson High School. Both of my parents grew up right here in East Tampa. Bought this building two years ago, or about eighteen months ago, and the idea of the purchase of this building was to help keep the fabric of the community strong here in East Tampa, and, and adds an opportunity to pay it forward. Growing up in, in Tampa and seeing all the historical cigar factories in West Tampa and East Tampa was one of the things I bragged about growing up here, especially on my many journeys playing basketball, both in AAU and in college around the country. So when this, when I had the opportunity to purchase this building, it was a no-brainer. The goal with this, with this purchase would be to help strengthen the Gary community by having a facility that could anchor the community and that everyone would be proud of. Have established a relationship with the pastor Richardson, who's just to the west of the, the building, as well as many community organizations in East Tampa. So the, the building would be an opportunity to house GED programming, IT programming. I am a individual that was, had been molded by the Boys and Girls Club, so a similar place where kids could be supported academically. It also, future weddings, galas, town halls, IT training. So the goal of the, the building is, one, to keep its historical fabric and look, as well as to be a place, a building where community folks that live in the Gary residential area could be proud of.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Maniscalco, you recognize, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So this would be used as a, basically a community center. People can come in and work and have access to Wi-Fi and, you know, things like that, but will it be for, you said, special events and whatnot?
Yes.
People can rent out the space?
All, all of the, all of the above.
Now, would you need beer and wine or any kind of wet zoning for anything in the future, or is strictly a professional setup?
Yeah, perhaps in the future with, with, with galas and weddings, I can imagine that would help and, and motivating people to rent out the facility. They would like to use those as, to enhance their galas and weddings.
But it won't be any type of nightclub or anything like that after hours?
Correct, no, no nightclub.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I may, thank you very much. Mr. Powell, how many parking spaces does this building have?
Based on the architecture renderings, it'll, it'll seventeen to twenty-two. Have established a relationship with Pastor Richardson, whose building is just to the west, and he has, and we created a, a deal so I can use his twenty-five parking spots that's located around his administration building, which is, which is just north of his church, north meaning about fifteen feet.
You heard the concerns from Mr. Cotton, or, or the reasons why it was rejected from Mr. Cotton. Do you have any concerns that the traffic coming in and out of here will affect the neighborhood streets?
I, I do not. So with the use of the, the parking that would be provided by the church across the street and the, the, the commercial businesses also that are located nearby, who mainly operate from nine to five, using the community center, or most of the programming will be happening from, I, I would say, five to nine P.M., when you're talking about after-school training, IT training. There's, there's a number of relationships that I've established along Thirty-Sixth Street that will assist with the parking, so using their parking would alleviate the amount of traffic that is coming in and around directly the building.
Then you, you answered my next question, that the, that the businesses will not, the business operation there will not go past nine o'clock at night?
Yes.
There, so there is no concern of the traffic that this business will be causing in the residential neighborhood?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Mr. Dingfelder, you recognize?
Thank you. Mr. Powell, it sounds like a neat project. The, what's that street? Is it Thirty-Sixth? Runs north-south in front of the church?
Correct, yes, Thirty-Sixth Street.
So that's, that's already a pretty busy, busy street. I can't remember if that's the one that goes under the interstate.
It does.
Yeah. So, so, so I don't think we're necessarily attracting, you know, any, any sort of huge amount of traffic to come into, to come into this facility. I think Gary needs help, and, and I appreciate the fact that you and whoever's going to be working with you on this is going to, you know, help elevate the community with, you know, with this type of center, sort of a multipurpose center. I think in the past, the church actually operated in a similar capacity. I remember going through there, and they had youth programs and all sorts of stuff, and unfortunately, that, the church kind of shrank and, and the pastor passed away and that sort of thing, so they had to move to the other, you know, to the little facility behind you there. But, but overall, I, I think it sounds like a good, a good project, so best of luck.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Mr. Powell, just want to be clear, no type of nightclub, entertainment, correct?
Correct.
And again, we talk about beer and wine, I mean, you know, some weddings, you know, like those type of things, but just making sure that we, we, we keep it, it's still residential neighborhood.
Yes.
Just want to make it clear on that.
Is there an hours of operation on this particular S one?
You recognize, Kamaria?
I, I was gonna ask Mr. Cotton to, to answer that question, because they're, Kamaria Pettis-Mackel for the record, they're still in the process of remodeling the cigar factory, so it's not a complete project. They're not ready to open for a business per se. So, but Mr. Cotton can address whatever the question is from Councilman Dingfelder about the hours of operation.
Mr. Cotton, you recognize?
Thank you, sir. The special use one for recreational facilities does not have hours of operations on, attached to them. There's no requirement of, you can open this time, you can close this time. There's nothing in that for the special use criteria for a recreational facility.
Is this a, is this a site plan-controlled project that we're looking at today?
It is in the sense of a site plan will be approved. Now, I don't know, and this is a question more for Ms. Pettis-Mackel, is whether or not the applicant can accept a condition that, as part of the, the overturning the zoning administrator, if they can make the comment and say, we will not be open past nine o'clock or ten o'clock at night, and we'll open before eight o'clock in the morning, or however that would work out. So there is no standards for, for time limits on this kind of, um.
I'll defer to legal counsel on that issue, but Mr. Powell, I, I wouldn't want you to tie your hands too much, because sometimes a wedding might go, you know, till, till ten or, or even eleven on a Saturday, a Friday or Saturday. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. On the, on the weekdays, clearly, you know, we should have some more modest hours, like eight or nine o'clock. Mr. Powell, how do you feel about putting some self-imposed hours on, on your facility and, and vary them day by, you know, day by day, depending on a weekday or a weekend?
Yeah, I have a, a, a understanding with Pastor Richardson to myself that it, it would be respectable hours.
Well, that's okay, but, but I'm trying to codify it.
Yeah, I, I, I am, I'm comfortable with a, like, like mentioned earlier, weddings could go over with a, with a, a nine, nine P.M. weekday, Monday, Monday through Thursday, something like that.
And how about the weekend? What would you feel comfortable on the weekend, Friday, Saturday?
I can imagine the longest wedding I, I've been through personally probably went to eleven.
Well, yeah, plus you're getting old there, sir.
Right, right.
You gotta, you gotta be in bed by ten.
That's right.
Um, all right, so if, if it's acceptable to legal counsel and to Mr. Powell, if we could possibly include a condition of, of nine o'clock Sunday through Thursday and eleven o'clock Saturday, Friday and Saturday, if that's okay with Mr. Powell and with Legal?
Kamaria Pettis-Mackel from the legal department, Councilman Dingfelder, per section twenty-seven one thirty, City Council can include conditions for an approval. If City Council so desires to approve the special use application, you do have the authority per section twenty-seven one thirty to place conditions on the special use application.
Okay, well, I don't want to impose them without consent of Mr. Powell, but it sounds like he's okay with that, so, so ultimately, whoever makes the motion to, if we make a motion to approve, I'd like to include that, those hour constraints. That's okay with Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, anybody from the public speak on the side? You have a public, second floor, speak on the side. Anybody registered to speak on the side?
No one is registered for this item.
And Chair, there's no one here from the public.
Move to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? Mr. Vera, could you do this down today, this afternoon, sir?
Mr. Chairman, if I can?
Yes, sir, you recognize?
Uh, just a reminder that the, you have in front of you the sample motions on the last page of what's been handed out for you to assist.
I move to overturn the zoning administrator's denial of special use one application because the petitioner's demonstrated the petition is consistent with the applicable general standard set forth in section twenty-seven dash one three-two and twenty-seven dash one two-nine.
Second by Mr. Maniscalco.
And would that include the modifications?
Yes, sir, yes, thank you.
Could you just state that on the record again?
It includes the aforementioned modifications.
And that being, does the clerk have it, or does Mr. Cotton wish to state it, just so that's clear for the special use purposes?
I'll, I'll state it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's Sunday through Thursday, nine P.M. latest public opening, and Friday, Saturday, eleven P.M.
Mr. Vera, you good with that?
Oh, yes, sir.
Mr. Maniscalco, second? Roll call.
Vera?
Yes.
Citro?
I am going to vote yes on this, and I understand that Thirty-Sixth Street is the main street. Mr. Powell, there are other residential streets involved, not just one street, but you have given me the assurance that there is no concern that this building will not create any other type of traffic. So with your assurance, I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Miranda?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
And Goode?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Good luck to you, Cedric.
Thank you.
You did a good job putting up East Tampa, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, we're gonna go jump into staff reports. Number forty, administrative update. I know probably Mr. Bennett, probably Ms. Osea-Win is, is in the acting position today, so let's see, we can move these things right along this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, City Council. This is Osea-Win, Administrator of Neighborhoods and Community Affairs. I come before you this morning with the administrative update. We have two updates, one from me and one that will be given from, or by Greg Spearmann.
Ms. Win, can you move that mic over just a little? Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Can you hear me now?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So one that will be given by me, and the other one that will be given by Greg Spearmann, Director of Purchasing. So I will start by saying it is with great excitement that I come before you this morning to announce that we have one of our own, Ms. McGregor, Janelle McGregor, to serve in the position as the Director of Community Engagement and Partnerships. I'm gonna give you a little bit about Janelle's background, and I'll let her explain what does this mean for the administration, for the city, and then for you as well. Janelle has been with the city for seventeen years. She started in the capacity as a spokesperson and community engagement lead within the Tampa Police Department. She was hired as an office support specialist within the East Tampa sector of TPD. She was promoted in two thousand eight as the director, as the department's media relations officer. And in this capacity, she provided the experience in the personnel unit and community relations to build positive relations with community stakeholders. She did this by social media, by local meetings, by on the face, on the campus in the face meetings. Janelle also provided the community engagement efforts by implementing programs and initiatives to help bridge the gaps between the police and the residents citywide. She managed the neighborhood affairs liaisons, and through her efforts, she reinvented the neighborhood watch. In twenty nineteen, Mayor Castor tapped Janelle to serve as the leader or the manager of community partnerships, which falls under my portfolio. Not only was she knee-deep in all of this, but she led several initiatives last year during COVID to educate the diverse populations about the coldness, about COVID, I'm sorry, and about bringing an awareness as well as business spending during that very challenging time for all businesses. So at this time, I would like to bring before you Janelle, and so that she can talk a little bit more in sync about what she will be doing in this new capacity. Janelle.
New head dude, look at him.
Thank you all so much. First, I have to thank Mayor Jane Castor, Administrator Win, and all of you, our honorable council members here today for this opportunity to lead neighborhood relations. This is a surreal moment for me, to be able to rise to this level, essentially doing something that I love to do, and that's educating and empowering our communities to foster productive dialogue, and most of all, positive change. So I look forward to this new assignment. I look forward to working collaboratively with all of you to redefine how the city connects with neighborhoods through a culture that supports collaboration, civility, and kindness. So thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you. Just have a question for Ms. Win. Where's Mr. Shelby?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
I, I heard the term director, meaning appointment, so I, when I hear that terminology in arterial, I didn't, I didn't see a resolution for item forty. So I want to be clear, if this is asking counsel for the appointment, I don't have a resolution in front of, in front of us, so this counsel can vote on her appointment.
No, well, no, sir. If, if you recall, we do have different levels of directors within the city.
Okay.
So this is not the director as we did the appointment for Sharisha Hills last week, a director that's over a, a department. This is one of our directors where we're over actually programs or specific areas or within a division, a director. So an appointment is not needed, or an approval for counsel is not needed.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure, I want to make sure we do everything up above board and make sure she gives what she needs to have to move forward. Mr. Shelby?
I'm sorry. I just, I just in discussion, but I, I think I got the gist of it, excuse me.
The discussion was, sir, I'll wait to get back to your seat. The discussion was, sir, I'll wait to get back to your seat.
If I understand correctly, whether this is a uh an administrator or director level position that would require something coming to council, and I believe Ms. Win did address the fact that um in the organizational structure of the city, this is not one of those positions that would come to the council. Is that correct, Ms. Win? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, in that case, Mr. Shelby has confirmed that. We have Andrea Zellman, you just chime in?
Karen, good, can you hear me?
You're recognized.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, I just wanted to confirm under the charter, section six point three, um what is submitted to council for confirmation after the mayor appoints our department heads or those with administrative authority or responsibility equal to or greater than that of a department head. The term director does not necessarily mean that the position is um has that same level of authority or responsibility as a department head, and so in this case, it has been determined that the position um is not at that level, so uh it is not necessary for us to submit that name to council for appointment or confirmation, I should say.
Thank you for the clarification. Just want to make sure we did Ms. Janelle McGregor right. Ms. Ding Felder, you're recognized, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that clarification, uh cause that was a curiosity to me as well. So uh this is basically a a polite introduction from Ms. Win of 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 Janelle and taking on a new responsibility that uh that we all agree with, I'm sure, and and we know she'll do a great job, and we congratulate her.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carlson, you're recognized, sir.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to um Janelle. It seems like you've done a, I haven't known you very long, but it seems like you've done a great job while you've been here. I appreciate your enthusiasm for the neighborhoods, and you talked about positive change, which is something we all always like to hear, so I look forward to working with you and partnering you with in all the neighborhoods that I'm involved with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, congratulations, Ms. McGregor.
Thank you all.
All right. What do we have next?
Okay, next, Council, we will have Mr. Greg Spearmun providing you an update as well.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. This is Greg Spearmun, Director of the Purchasing Department. Uh, I'd like to share with you that we received word uh this past Tuesday that we again were the recipients of the Excellence in Procurement Award that's um actually administered by the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, so this is the fifteenth year that we have applied for this award, and we have actually received the award. And it's not an award where you fill out an application and you send money, and then they send you a certificate or an award. So just to kind of give you an idea what's involved in terms of the application process and some of the criteria that's involved, I just want to share with you a few of the things um in terms of the criteria that's necessary to win the award. So um I want to highlight a few things. So one of the things would be procurement ethics standards, vendor, formal vendor training, performance measures or performance metrics, organizational structure, internal homepage, online electronic vendor registration, user of an electronic interactive solicitation system, internal procurement automation, internet surplus auction system, P-card system, electronic P-card manual, comprehensive P-card program, audit and certification, certification of your chief procurement official, certification of your chief professional staff, education of your chief procurement official, and also education of your professional staff. So we work really hard um to maintain professional standards and ethics and best practices. We are members of the local Tampa Bay chapter of N I G P, where we receive a lot of our training, but we're also connected on the national scene with the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing. Uh, that is the gold standard in terms of public purchasing training and certification. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Not many cities or other entities are able to achieve this type of recognition and certification. It certainly puts standard, um you know, puts Tampa on the map in terms of high standards and ethical training and behavior, uh which we subscribe to in our agency. We also have a leadership team, uh that being Deanna Marshall, who is my goods and uh who's my purchasing assistance manager, who's certified, Kevin Frye, who is my uh goods and services manager, who is also certified, and a number of our purchasing agents. And I also want to lift up and give kudos to my executive aide, Michelle Blizzard, because she is the person that works in our department every year to keep track of all the certifications and trainings and and all those kinds of things uh that are necessary necessary to submit the application. And I also want to give a shout out to Michael Ashby, uh who is our inventory manager, uh who makes sure that we keep the inventory stocked with all the goods and services that we need to keep the the city running, and in particular, our rescue units. Uh, we stock and supply those rescue units and fire department and and police with everything they need to operate. So again, I just wanted to make you aware of the um certification achievement, um this national award and recognition. We thank you for your support and also support of the administration. Thank you, Council.
Ms. Ding Felder, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Spearmun and Ms. Win for for bringing this matter to council's attention. I I think there, well, Greg, as you as you know, when I was twenty-three, twenty-four years old, straight out of my master's degree, the first professional job I had was a government purchasing agent up in Tallahassee, and I never forgot it because there there's very little more important than than purchasing and 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 doing it in an ethical and honest and professional way, and that's what you guys represent. You and I have known each other, you've been at this, I think, at the City of Tampa sixteen years, and I'm sure many, many more years uh total, and um and you've been doing a great job. You built up a great team, uh year after year, you receive awards locally and nationally, and we're really proud of you. But the the work that you do, it's, you know, you guys are unsung unsung heroes. You know, no, you're you're not, you're not out there doing ribbon cut ribbon cuttings for good purchasing efforts. So you're behind the scenes, and um and we're really proud of of the achievements that that you have today, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Ms. Win, thank you for the great leadership you're showing in the purchasing department and the folks that you've got under you doing a great job for it today. So again, thank you on the award, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Goode, thank you.
All right, anything else on administrative updates?
Councilman Goode, that concludes the administrative updates.
Thank you, sir. Item number forty-one. Motion made by staff, made by council. Anyone from legal for this uh this resolution?
Not necessary, Mr. Chairman.
I'm comfortable moving the resolution.
All right. Mr. Ding Felder has moved it, Mr. Miranda has seconded, roll call vote.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
And Goode?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, item number forty-two. There he is, Brad Baird.
Hi, good morning, City Council. Brad Baird, Deputy Administrator of Infrastructure, here to answer any questions on item forty-two.
And Mr. Baird, remind us of of what your W M B accomplishments are on this particular item?
Yes, Councilman Ding Felder, thank you for asking that. This participation um uh breakdown is follows, B B E participation at ten point four percent, H B E at point one percent, and S L B E, or Small Local Business Enterprise, at four point nine percent.
For those for those watching, the B B E is the Black Business Enterprise, H B E is Hispanic Business Enterprise. For those who don't know the acronyms, yeah.
Yes, yes, and then that totals at fifteen point four percent. I would like to point out that this is um an initial design services um agreement for three improvements at the at the Howard F. Current Treatment Plant, but the participation, the B B E participation is actually early purchase of seven pumps associated with uh the main pumping station, and uh so that's why we have received a high participation there from a paper firm by the name of Sukka Pipe Supply One.
Any other questions?
There's no other questions, I'll move the item.
Mr. Ding Felder has moved it, Mr. Miranda has seconded, roll call vote.
Miranda?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Goode?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Item number forty-three.
Thank you, Brad.
Mr. Rahero, thank you, sir.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Council. Dennis Rahero, Chief Financial Officer. Thank you for having us here this morning to talk about this debt issuance. We're asking council to approve approximately thirty-five million dollars of stormwater debt. This is the second planned debt issuance associated with this program from twenty sixteen, the Central and Lower Basin Improvement Area, so this is all part of our ongoing multi-year process. Council may recall that the improvement assessment was initially established specifically for this purpose, to finance debt service associated with stormwater capital improvement projects. Council may also recall that in twenty eighteen, we issued our first tranche of debt, approximately eighty-five million dollars. I'm very happy to announce we're hiring an outside firm to look at these projects and the program in an effort at getting an independent opinion that these are green bonds. If successful, these will be our first green bonds issued by the city, so we're looking forward to that confirmation. We provided a memo with details about the capital improvement projects. I briefed many of you. Thank you again for your time and feedback. As part of those briefings, we were asked to provide just a bit more information about the improvement area, so if I can share my screen? And if you'll let me know when you can see it.
When you see it, you gotta blow it up a little bit. There it is, we got it.
You have it, sir?
We have it.
Excellent, thank you. Of course, you see the city and its surrounding areas along with the city limits. The red hue is the improvement area. It's quite large, it's the majority of the surface area, and on the next slide, if I can bring that up, you see it is the overwhelming majority of those we serve, about three hundred and twenty-six thousand, covering approximately seventy square miles. I'll bring the map back up for you. So it's a very large program, a very large monetary program. We anticipate two other debt issuances associated with this, well thought out, and I think we're making very good progress, and this is the next step in that program. I can answer any questions you have. We also have our financial advisor, Molly Clark, on the line, and Administrator Jean Dunk.
Questions, gentlemen? One-on-ones, any questions?
Second.
All right, Maniscalco has moved it, Mr. Miranda has seconded, roll call.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
And Goode?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, item number forty-four.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Item number forty-four has already been dealt with, so it's item number forty-five, item forty-six.
Mr. Chairman.
I forgot twenty-seven, so you're right, we're registered twenty, I want to get to you.
No, actually, I was gonna say on forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine, staff's already provided memorandums.
I I we went over this agenda a little early, and I have questions for forty-seven, sir.
Okay, uh do you want to just accept forty?
Question on forty-seven and also forty-nine, I want to hear from staff.
All right, does anybody have any questions on forty-six? We could just uh accept it.
Forty-six, Mr. V, no, forty-six, Mr. Vera, we want to hear about that.
Okay.
Yep.
May I, sir?
You may, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, yeah, I I and I and again, I I don't have any questions on it. I think the memo is very um very good and detailed, and um thank you, Brad and Andrea, for that as always. You know, I I again, I always want to take the the opportunity on this um ordinance to thank the both of you guys, Brad and Andrea, for your hard work on this ordinance. This was a very long and and winding process and whatnot. I think it, we we worked on it for well over a year, and both of y'all were such integral parts of this, and the wonderful thing about this um this memorandum is that it shows it wasn't for nothing, uh at least so far, which is good. We we still got next, every, I I think that every session, we're gonna probably be holding our breath on this issue. The good thing is, is that this ordinance um will not be killed in its first year, God willing, it will never be killed, uh because I I I think it really, really does um uh good work. I know that we have um updates that'll be coming from city council, or to city council, I should say, on the progress of this ordinance, and I really, really look forward uh to seeing this ordinance work out. For for those uh uh who may be watching this, this is an ordinance that mandates that on specific city projects, over a million dollars uh through contractors, that twelve percent of the workforce come from a state certified apprenticeship program. And what what that does is, and and there's a a lot of different provisions in there. We have good faith efforts uh provisions so that we accommodate our friends in the business community, and then if they meet that mandate, then they get, I think it was a fifth of their, if I recall, their retainer back, so the city has some skin in the game. We did that, working with the business community um on this. But this is such an important ordinance because I I I think it's one of the the most robust ordinances we've passed that that not just stands behind working people, um but that gives opportunities to people, because there's so many people out there um who would love to have one of these jobs and these opportunities, uh whether it's as a a welder, an electrician, a carpenter, whatever it may be, any of the covered fields. And not just does this ordinance provide opportunity through the contracting process, through a reasonable but yet assertive means, through such a good collaborative process, but it promotes the skilled trades. It promotes the skilled trades that so many different organizations, whether they're labor unions or different organizations, A B C, the C D C, uh so many um or, yeah, yeah, C D C, uh work in in the Tampa area to promote and whatnot. So again, I just wanted to thank you all for your hard work in this. When I took this up um a little over a year ago, I wanted to make it a drawn-out process because we had to engage with all the stakeholders, um but we had to do it right, and y'all helped us do it right, and it took a lot of hard work. So I just wanted to thank you guys for your professionalism and and your hard work, and and I'm glad to see that we can see the products of our work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? When can we look to start implementing this, uh Mr. Mr. Vera or Ms. Zellman?
Uh, the ordinance um was effective on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, so that that is when the mayor approved it, and it is to be implemented no later than September twenty-second, uh twenty twenty-one. Then, and that is for vertical construction, and then um no later uh than twelve months after the implementation of the ordinance, we will be adding horizontal construction as well. Now, I do want to add one thing that to Councilman Vera. I had the privilege of addressing the Mayor's Workforce Council yesterday, and I will tell you, uh there is a lot of excitement and energy behind this ordinance, and um city councils should be proud of passing this ordinance.
You said the Mayor's Workforce Council?
Yes, yes.
I think that's new to all of us, uh we gotta hear more about that.
Yeah, yeah, so they had a a council meeting yesterday at the Convention Center, and um it was uh pretty well attended, and uh they are very excited about this ordinance.
Could you give us some information on the Workforce Council? There's a little council is a turn a little bit, so your office can give us some information on the Workforce Council, it'd be great to know, so we can all know what is what the Workforce Council's description is and who's all on the board of the Workforce Council.
Yes, and that is um being uh kind of headed up by uh Brandon McKenzie, and I'm sure he would be happy to provide an update on that.
All right.
Yes, uh, Council, this is Osea-Win, Administrator of Neighborhood and Community Affairs. The um workforce of development falls within my portfolio, and we'll be glad, I'll be glad or have or have Brandon to come to provide an update on the status of where we are. Workforce development was one of Mayor Castor's initiatives, and we've been working diligently. So yes, we'll provide an update to you about what this is, and then on um on some of the strides we've taken to improve the workforce within the in the Tampa. we've taken to improve the workforce within the, in the Tampa.
And we'll be in a future council, you can bring that in, and that way we can, uh, find out about it. Mr. Dean Felder, you're recognized.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen, was that a just, was that a continuation of the, uh, the original five, uh, you know, five committees, from two years ago?
Yeah, well, yes and no, sir, it was not one of those committees. It was, um, it was, uh, one of the Mayor's initiatives where we were focusing on a workforce. What this, what has happened is that this has developed into, actually, yes, sir, it was one of the five committees, yes, it was. It was one of the five committees that...
I had a recollection that that was one of the original five committees, so I didn't realize it was carrying on, but, but, um, that explains it a little bit.
Yes, sir, and I'll be glad to, uh, have, uh, to report back with an update.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Alright, any other questions on, uh, item forty-six? Thank you, Mr. Viera, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Alright, item number forty-seven.
Hello again sir, this is Dennis Herro.
Thank you sir. If you kinda give the council a, a little background on the development here, and I was kinda a little confused with little questions, that some of the statements that we didn't know, where some of these funds or had, they have receipts, or what these funds for projects have gone to. So I, I'm just kinda curious, why don't we have that, if we're, if money's coming for projects here, or who should have that? So if you could just kinda give us a, a little background history, uh, and, and kinda enlighten some of the council members who didn't know about this possibly, to, to, so they can be up to date and up to speed, sir.
Certainly sir, certainly sir. You see here, a, a pretty detailed report about the funding and the amounts of funding that we hold in our three banks. And as you can see from the memo, we hold this funding in the banks for various reasons, and the amounts vary, not significantly typically, but vary over time. And then you see the banks' efforts at community reinvestment under the Federal Community Reinvestment Act.
Do you have a presentation, give your presentation to show us, or you're just talking?
Oh, I'm just talking.
Okay, alright, go ahead, go ahead.
Speaking from the memo.
Go ahead.
Okay, and again, that's, you know, that's wherein the banks use that funding, or use portions of their funding to provide low, or credit to low and moderate income neighborhoods. And you can see those three banks over the last five years, that encompass this report, have reinvested or, or provided over three hundred and ten million dollars. We get into a little bit of detail for each bank as to where that particular funding goes and for what purpose, typically by fiscal year, or by, excuse me, fiscal or calendar year, where we received it. Um, further to your point, um, Mr. Chair, if you'd like us to pursue in more detail where this particular funding goes beyond this report, we're, we're happy to do it. Of course, of course, these banks, they've got, uh, you know, any number of resources, and just any number, or any very, very large amounts of funding, and the city's funding is only a particular portion.
Well, I, the reason I ask that question is because I, I, I got, you know, sometimes people, they research things well, and they bring it to my office, and again, I had a couple people bring this, my attention, because, you know, those dollars are supposed to go to certain marginalized communities. Uh, so my, my thing is, okay, if that's the case, I like to know what communities they went to, and how much was spent in those communities, because when I looked at a couple other cities who questioned the same thing I'm questioning now, they found that those dollars went other places other than marginalized communities. So I just wanna make sure that our banking institutions that we're banking with, and our money's there, and what they're supposed to be doing, that we are doing it. So I'm not looking you to go way stretched back, but I like to have an answer on some of the projects that they've actually done, and the years they've done in some of our communities. That's very vital to, uh, some of those marginalized communities.
Thank you, no, I, I appreciate that more, uh, detailed information. It, I don't know that we haven't received some of that information in our queries with the banks. We've had a couple of different conversations, and I could be remiss in not providing enough detail in this report. Um, so if you don't mind, we'll circle back to you with more detail about those particular projects.
I appreciate that, sir. Mr. Carlson, you're recognized.
Also, I think the question on this motion was just banks, this does not include the, the asset management accounts, right? And...
That's, that's correct Counsel.
Active asset management, and is it, well, we, that's a discussion for another day, but that number is probably a lot larger than, um, if you include pension and everything, it's much larger than these numbers, right?
It is.
Anyone else? Mr. Herro, thank you for giving us a, a brief description, I think you kinda know where I'm heading with that, so hopefully, we get another, uh, update sooner rather than later.
Yes, sir, we'll get right on.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank you Counsel.
Item forty-eight. I think forty-eight is Mark Wolfall, I believe. Did we release him earlier?
I believe you, I believe you might have, sir.
Okay, we released him forty, okay, fine.
Unless there's any questions.
I don't know, I'm good with, anybody else in question, we're good, alright, item number forty-nine.
Did you want, uh, oh, that's just a receiving file then, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I do, I'm, I'm just inquisitive, it says legal, uh, solid waste, uh, percentage requires outsourcing. Is, is, is that going to eliminate any positions that we have now?
Alright, well, it...
Well, what it is, is we asked a question, Mr. Counsel, and I asked a question along with the board here at the City Council, and what this is, is to, there was a part, a long time ago, many years back, I can't remember where you started.
Mr. Miranda, I don't mean to interrupt you, is, is Mr. Wolfall, uh, on the line at all?
Or Sal?
Or Sal, or somebody, well, maybe they might come up before Mr. Miranda's finished, go ahead, sir.
Anyway, you had to have a certain percentage away from the entity or the city of the government to handle part of the garbage pickup, that has gone away, to my understanding, and this company in, in, uh, twenty-twenty-three, is anticipated that the rate's gonna go up like thirty-five, forty percent. We asked the city to look into it, and after the expiration of the contract, which I think ends in twenty-twenty-three, the city's gonna make an effort to pick up all of New Tampa's projects and save about half a million dollars in doing that. That's what this is about. Mr. Wolfall could testify to that, my understanding, that's what it is.
Alright, well, it seemed like there's questions there that we really didn't know, and we released the person, so I think that might be a, a point to come back, I think we may have time, or I think Mr. Nguyen is the person in charge for administrators today, if, if we can get Mr. Wolfall or Sal on the line before we close out, we can come back to it with, uh, after we get through with number forty-nine and twenty-seven, it's up to be discussed, so...
Yes, I'm trying to get him on now.
Alright, we'll go ahead to forty-nine, uh, Ms. Austin?
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, sir, I'm here to answer any additional questions on number forty-nine, which was a readout on the, uh, number of employees that had tested positive for COVID-nineteen.
I think, uh, I think staff, uh, council members are kinda looking a little bit more, uh, what we, where we at right now as far as these numbers, where do we, where are we, where are we headed? I see Mr. Viera with his hand, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, and did you wanna go first, Mr. Chair?
No, no, go ahead, no, no, wait.
Just make, thank you, sir. Yeah, and, and Ms. Austin, I, I don't, I don't have any questions, I didn't, I didn't, uh, I thank you for this very detailed memo. I did this just because, you know, in talking to a lot of city employees, you hear a lot of stories about, um, that them undergoing uh, treatment for COVID with such disastrous personal consequences. We see it from ATU members, we see it from Tampa Fire, we see it from Tampa Police Department, and it's very, very, it's, it's, number one, it's disturbing, just like it is with any, every group. I don't mean the city of Tampa, um, is, is any more disturbing than anybody else, but it, uh, just, I think it should give rise from the public to a sense of appreciation, especially, uh, you know, with COVID-nineteen, where you got it, when you got it, who knows? But with a lot of these employees, sanitation employees, parks and recreation employees, for example, who are always around the public, you know, we should be especially thankful to them. Uh, for our firefighters and our police officers, you know, being around the public, um, as, as, as much as they are in getting COVID, so many of those, uh, so many of these individuals that I've just mentioned, I've talked to, have, uh, reduced lung capacity, permanently reduced lung capacity, and they, they, many of them got it on the job. It's, um, again, just something that I think the public should know for all of our employees, because they've worked for us in many different capacities during such a difficult time. Uh, but just thank you so much for this memo, that's all I wanted to highlight, and I, and I appreciate it.
Anyone else, while Mr. Austin's here? Alright, with that being said, thank you very much, Ms. Austin.
Alright, thank you, have a good day, Counsel.
Alright, item number twenty-seven, I think Mr. Dean Felder wanted to add it for a little discussion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, uh, whose, whose item this is on, from staff, there's Ms. Feely. Abby, if you could just give us a little update on what this item is, and what the purpose is, and, uh, and then if I have, have any further questions, I'll ask.
Absolutely, Counsel, good morning, Abby Feely, uh, Director of Development and Growth Management. The item number twenty-seven, as, um, Counsel is aware, in twenty-twenty, the city received approximately three-point-two million dollars in what is referred to as CDBG CB funds, and those are COVID-related funds. Per the city's action plan that was done, uh, last year, and amended to receive these funds, um, this money is being spent to facilitate relief for businesses, um, uh, impacted by COVID, I'm sorry. One of the sub recipients, uh, of that three-point-two million, as you know, our sub recipients when the CDBG funds come in, they go out through agreements. Um, and then, if additional funds are available to feed those agreements, we then amend the agreement to include those additional funds, and that's what's before you today. What's before you today is an additional two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, um, that would go under the existing agreement to, um, Tampa Hillsborough Action Plan in order to provide additional businesses with relief that have been impacted by COVID.
And is that, uh, geographically limited, um, th- these particular funds, or the total three million, in terms of certain parts of town, businesses in certain parts of town?
There just has to be a demonstration that the business has been impacted, um, and there are criteria for that, and then we monitor that as well.
Okay, and, and who, if, if folks are listening and they have a business that has been impacted, and they wanna apply for these funds, who would they get in touch with, or how, what, what would the best way for them to be to reach out into the city?
They could call our Housing Department, and then we would be able to put them in contact with the appropriate suburbs that be in agency that would best be able to assist them.
Okay, so the Housing Department is, is, is running this show?
Yes, those funds do come in through, um, our traditional HUD funds, and, and are administered in a similar process to our general CDBG funds, which were actually coming before you to discuss tonight.
Alright, well, thank you, Ms. Feely, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to make sure the community's, uh, you know, plugged in that some of these funds are still coming through, thank you.
Wanna move resolution?
Seven.
Second.
Say one, Mr. Miranda, uh, roll call vote please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Dean Felder?
Yes.
And Goode?
Yes.
Motion Carry Nelson.
Were we able to get, uh, Mr. Wolfall or Sal on the line for forty-eight?
We have, um, Ms. Duncan on, um, she's supposed to be on to discuss number forty-eight. Jean, are you on?
Uh, yes, I'm here, good, uh, good morning, uh, City Council members. Apologize for not having Mr. Wolfall or Mr. Um, Herro available, uh, through the briefings that, um, were held, uh, prior to this item, and, uh, the conversation this morning, we were of the impression that the memo was sufficient for your interest in this topic. Uh, we would like to, uh, answer any questions offline, uh, so that we don't have any, uh, issues with our contractor in terms of negotiations, and if, then if it's appropriate, uh, after, um, answering those questions, we'd be happy to come back to Counsel, um, and, you know, do more of a discussion for the public. Uh, so if that would satisfy your interest for today, we'd be happy to follow up with any of you that have particular questions about this item.
I was gonna say something, Mr. Miranda gave me a little cue, so I'll, I'll go ahead and let him, since he's the legend here, and knows a little bit more.
That's what I said earlier, Mr. Chairman, I believe that they, uh, they're working on the concept of doing the whole city. They're not doing the whole city now, leaving about the New Tampa area, some of the smart, smaller parts of the areas around the New Tampa, being picked up by a private, uh, contractor, and the bill keeps rising. So they're gonna try to make it a, I think it, the contracts to twenty-twenty-three, and, uh, they're looking at now making that part of the city's pickup service, which I think would help the citizens and, uh, keep everybody in the same keel.
Anybody have other questions? Ms. Viera, you're recognized.
And thank you, sir, and thank you, uh, for that, and thank you, Councilman Miranda, uh, for your words, and I, I'd, uh, ask, I'd love to talk with you all about this, obviously, and I'll ask my assistant, Brandon, if you don't mind, to set up a call on this at a, at a later time, because trash pickup in New Tampa is, uh, is kind of an acute issue right now, so I, I appreciate it, thank you.
Ms. Duncan, I'll, I'll, I'll heed what you're, what you're saying about negotiations, but so let, but let's go ahead and, uh, let council members know exactly what's going on with this item, and what's forthcoming in the future, so we can be abreast of it, if you don't mind, please.
Uh, Counselman, basically, uh, a question was posed last month about, uh, outsourcing to, uh, private entities, and what were the possibilities of, um, you know, addressing the whole city, uh, in that regard? And so, the team provided a memo to you, you know, with our position on that, but like I said, we'd like to answer any particular questions offline. As you, some of you may know, the county is having some significant issues with their contract for their outsourcing services within the county, and they've actually reached out to the city for assistance. So there's a lot of discussions going on in that regard as well, and, um, based on their experience, with that situation, we'd like, at this point in time, respectfully, to answer questions one-on-one, uh, so there's a little more settlement of the situation, uh, and at whatever appropriate point, we can come back and have more of a public discussion on it, if that's, if that's still desired.
That'll be fine, Ms. Duncan, you give the council members, the people that sees, I know when they're, they have these looks, I know they, they got questions brewing, but we'll, we'll, we'll hold back, uh, you get your folks to get with us offline, and we'll go from there, alright?
Really appreciate that, thank you for your consideration.
Alright, thank you. Gentlemen, we have, we have gone through all items, uh, right at the midday time, if, uh, if, uh, my good friend, uh, for, uh, new business, Luis Viera, don't have fifteen emotions, might get out of here right at twelve, huh?
I only have a handful, thank you, thank you. I, may I, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, and I mentioned this before, um, I motion for the up-down pres, uptown presentation at the regular session, meeting of City Council on September second at nine AM, and that said presentation be placed into ceremonial items, presentations, I don't know how that, uh, day looks. Um, I think it's okay, but I'm not sure, September second.
Second.
Two presentations scheduled presently, and how long is this presentation, sir?
That's a good question, uh, Mr. Chair or Marty, do you all want me to move it to another day? Because this would be three presentations, and I don't want...
We can move it to October.
How many presentations?
Well, right now, you presently have a commendation, uh, for, um, um, Mr. Swindle, uh, for being the former Chair of Board of Tampa Bay, um, a, a presentation for a commendation of, for Joe Greco.
I think that's gonna be scratched.
That, Joe Greco, actually?
Yeah.
That's going, yeah, 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 so, I'll, I'll, that's a separate motion. So, you know, given, yeah, because Joe, Joe's was gonna take a while, wasn't it?
Not now, but, uh, if you wanna get to that, and then we can, you know, go ahead, you know...
So, is September second okay?
September second's fine.
And again, how long is, do you suspect that presentation, that'll be fine, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, and actually, I motion to take off, Mr. Greco.
Let's get to the first motion first, you motion for your, for your, for your, the first one?
Yes, sir.
Get a second?
Second, I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried, go on with your second, sir.
Motion to remove Mr. Greco's commendation to be given at a later time.
Second.
Do you want to state the reason?
Uh...
Or maybe not necessarily, but it's not related to Mr. Greco's performance.
Oh, he's a fine gentleman, he's a fine gentleman.
Mr. Viera wants to move the commendation of Mr. Greco, second by Mr. Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. Um, the next, I, I know there's been some concerns, uh, there, there was a story out on, on Tampa, on, on the forthcoming budget in Tampa Fire Rescue and Fire Stations, and I'm gonna be speaking with the administration on that, with some, uh, members of Tampa Fire. Uh, we've, um... Uh, we've, um, you know, Tampa City Council through motions has, has stayed our, our preference when it comes to public safety. I know there's other issues like affordable housing that we're equally passionate about, but when it comes to this, this budget is a really ripe time, uh, to take care of that. So I, I mean, uh, I, I think our, our opinions on that are very, very well-known, but just, um, FYI, I'll be, uh, engaging on some meetings, particularly as a, a lot of it entails areas in North Tampa that are in acute need, uh, of assistance. I did want to motion, though, I wanted a Tampa City Council workshop. It's, you know, workshops can often take, take a look at a, a, a larger narrative of an issue, and we, we talk a lot about the term, the school-to-prison pipeline, um, and, and what that means. And I would like to have, because, for example, we talked about the apprenticeship, uh, ordinance. To me, that's something that deals with the school-to-prison pipeline, which is telling young folks in high school that, hey, uh, you know, you can pursue a middle-class lifestyle, uh, through these apprenticeship programs. And I want to do a, a workshop, we can do it in December, um, on what the city is doing through ideas like summer jobs, apprenticeships, re-entry programs, et cetera, for the school-to-prison pipeline. Um, I'll come up with some, uh, speakers, uh, on that. I don't anticipate taking a very long time, but just because that, that's such a, a, a often-mentioned, uh, term that, that resonates with so many different communities in the city of Tampa, and the question has to be asked, what are we doing? What are we doing on that issue? Um, what have we done? And what can we do better?
Just so you know, Mr. Vera, I did have a conversation with Mike Twain, Kelly Austin, and O.C.O. Nguyen last week about the same thing, uh, reference to the school district needs to know every job that this city has, so people, we can prepare the next generation to be able to step forth and fill some shoes. So, it's a great motion, hopefully they'll be a part of that discussion as well for your workshop.
Yes, sir. And if I may, Councilman Naskalko just told me that October twenty-eighth is the last available workshop, um, but I guess before the end of the year, it would appear, um, is that, do we have anything that day?
It, there's room, I believe. Mr. Chairman, if you take a look.
Yeah, it looks like there's room. She only did the room view? I think there's room here.
There's room for that, sir, if that's council's pleasure.
Marvelous.
There's room for that. October twenty-eighth, Mr. Vera, motion on the floor, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Citro, in favor? Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'll save my ninety-eight others for next week.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Mr. Maniscalco?
Yes, I'd like the, uh, legal department to come back with, uh, with a report, August twenty-eighth, under staff reports, on the definition of what a commercial vehicle is.
Second.
Second.
And if, just for the purposes of that, is to reference the issue, and, and I don't recall the section of chapter twenty-seven that defines it.
Uh, it was moving, it had, it, it originally moved parts of chapter twenty-seven to chapter fifteen, so it's that specific. It's what we voted on a couple of weeks ago on second reading.
Thank you.
Motion up by Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Dingfelter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Carlson, you recognize?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Mr. Citro, you recognize?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Uh, during the boat parade, I saw something very, very unusual. It was a floating billboard.
What's happening?
And, and I would just like, uh, legal staff to come back with, come back to us and just give us just a brief, uh, comment on whether or not those are even allowed within our code.
Uh, Mr. Shelby, you recognize, sir?
Did you want an appearance for that or a written report?
Just, just an appearance, maybe two minutes explaining if, if it is it, what we're doing about it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, motion on the floor by Mr. Citro. Second by Mr. Carlson, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion Carry.
Nothing further, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Dingfelter?
Yeah, they're, they're litigating that issue over at the beach, at the beaches, um, Mr. Citro. Um, okay, I'd, call me Louis Junior today, I've got four. Um, first off, at the request of administration and legal, I'll make a motion that we open the appointment slash nomination process for a city council selection to the ci- uh, citizens' police review board, for a member appointed by city council, whose term will begin on or about January fourth, twenty-twenty-two. The deadline to submit an application will be September third, twenty-twenty-one, and that consideration of the applicants and the appointment of a member from the qualified applicants be placed on our September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, or October seventh, twenty-twenty-one regular agenda.
Second.
Question.
You recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I think, uh, for the purposes of the clerk, um, to have a date certain, is there a preference, um, Madam Clerk, for that?
No preference.
So I suspect it would be best for council just to choose one date, um, in speaking, um.
Well, let's, let's say the October seventh, that will give people, that will give people plenty of time to review the applicants and gives, give us plenty of time to review the applicants.
Okay, and if you could forward that motion to the clerk, that would be appreciated.
Dingfelter's moved October seventh, uh, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Shelby, um, I, I know for a while last year, we were doing workshops with subjects, with major subjects, like, you know, uh, the land use, land use, uh, department, you know, took like an entire day, and we had very productive workshop day, all about land use issues. Do we have a land use workshop coming up?
No, actually, Mr. Uh, Mr. Dingfelter, we have not followed up specifically, council has not. Um, I suspect it would be wise to perhaps, if you, council wants to go in that direction, which is something the administration, uh, has suggested, um, that at least with the workshops beginning the first of the year, we can start that process, because you're scheduled now through October, which is your last workshop of the year.
And how's the October workshop look?
It, it, we just added just one item, and I believe it's, it's, there's still sufficient room. The question is how much, how, how many items and how long do you want to spend per item to be able to determine how long your meeting is gonna be?
Okay.
That's for council's decision.
All right, well, as an aside, I hope next year, twenty-twenty-two, we get into that habit of trying to dedicate, you know, January workshop is gonna be land use, and February workshop will be transportation, and, you know, that sort of thing. I think it's really helpful.
Would you like to ask in the form of a motion of me work with the administration to be able to come up with a schedule to present to council, so council can choose to adopt that?
If it, i- if it's council's desire, I'll make that motion. Anybody like or not like that idea?
I, if, if I may, I mean, I, I don't have any strong opposition to it. I think that, that, um, you know, maybe we want to squeeze something in that's not a specific subject, but, but I'll, I'll vote for it. I have no problem.
I agree, Louis, completely. I think, you know, we could have a major theme for that month, and then if we have to squeeze something in.
I'll support it.
There's always an exception to the rule.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem supporting, I just want to make sure, because sometimes we do need things to come up. So I don't want to get balled down seeing how much time it's gonna be, but it may be a designated time, and then we still could ask some things for other discussions. Because I don't think it's gonna take a whole, whole day for some of these, uh, departments.
All right, so the intent, you know the intent of my motion, Mr. Shelby, and that would be, that would be my motion.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vieira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion Carry.
So now I'm up to five, five motions, including that one. Um, so my underlying motion is that, uh, in the October workshop, that we ask, uh, Ms. Feely and her group to come in and discuss with us the issue of private access for new projects, multi-family, larger multi-family or commercial projects to local roads and streets. There seems to be some ambivalence or confusion in the code, um, and, and sometimes projects, large projects are allowed access as a matter of right to local streets, and that can be problematic, I believe, and we've run into a few of these. Um, and then sometimes they can't, but if they call themselves a mixed use or a commercial project, then they can. I just think we should try and get some consistency in that issue. And, uh, and, and anyway, so, so I'd like staff to come in, give us a report of the, of, of the status quo, where we are today on that issue of access of new projects to local streets and roads.
Vieira, second to motion, Mr. Dingfelter, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion Carry.
Um, it's funny what you read in the, in the paper and, and then follow up on, uh, over in St. Petersburg, uh, sometimes they do, do some really neat progressive things, and then we follow suit, and maybe they do the same with us, I don't know. But the, the other day, they adopted a community benefits agreement.
Dingfelter, I, I already have it, and I've got the whole packet ready to go.
I will defer, I will defer to you, Mr. Chairman. See, we don't violate sunshine, so I wasn't aware of that.
We already have it ready to go.
All right, my, my last motion, I'm down to four now, is, uh, uh, our good friend Mario Nunez and his, uh, motley crew have, um, uh, as of last year, was the tenth anniversary of the Tampa Native Show, and I wanted to do this motion last year, but we wanted to do it in person. So now we're up to the eleventh anniversary. But anyway, I'd like to give them a commendation.
Second.
On the tenth anniversary of the Tampa Native Show, um, to be presented, do we have a regular meeting on September sixteenth?
No, sir.
No, twenty-third? Right. Mazel tov. Um, twenty-third? Thirty. Okay, September thirtieth.
Second.
Second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that would be it for today. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Miranda?
Thank you, Chairman. I got a few. I would like to make a motion to present a well-deserved commendation to Tampa Police Chief Brian Dugan, who, after thirty years of service, and his last day with the city would be September tenth, twenty-twenty-one, and I'd like to make this presentation to, uh, Chief Dugan on September the second at nine AM.
Second, uh?
Second for me.
Second by Mr. Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion Carry.
And the other five, I'll be doing five from now on to make sure I keep open by colleagues.
All right, gentlemen. All right. That, Mr. Dingfelter stated, you know, gentlemen, earlier we did pass a, a lot of people didn't know that we kind of started the, the ball down the road a little bit, because we instituted a community benefits agreement with our CRH, if you recall. So it wasn't like St. Pete was the first. We were the first to get on the ball, uh, and we were told certain things in reference to a citywide, but obviously somebody has, uh, found a way, has crafted a way to do something that, uh, a lot of people are asking about. So at this time, I make a motion for the legal department to review the city of St. Petersburg, uh, recently enacted community benefits agreement program and study how its application and its methods and process can be mirrored and applied within the city of Tampa. I'd like to place this on the October workshop on the twenty-eighth, uh, and I have the provided materials, uh, and background, uh, for such, uh, the ordinance over in St. Pete.
Mr. Chairman made a motion, uh, Mr. Dingfelter made a second. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but anyway. Anybody else want to make the second?
I'll make the second.
Uh, Mr. Citro made the second. I'll withdraw mine. And, uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Tim, I have just two more, uh, that I got several calls on, and, uh, you know, the, uh, president, uh, enacted a new federal holiday. Uh, Hillsborough County has also adopted the holiday, uh, so I'd like to make a motion for the administrator to look into instituting Juneteenth as a city holiday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, uh, Mr. Chairman's made a fantastic motion, and, uh, I support it wholeheartedly.